Welcome to the City Commission Meeting, Tuesday, May 13th. Would you join me in the flag salute?
Do you want to call roll first, Mary?
No, I'm going to sit in the flag.
Okay.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just shaking it up a little, Jason. Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Minton.
Here.
Quorum has been met.
Okay, um, do we want to make a motion to allow public comment? I don't think we need to do it for each individually, I think we can just say.
Yeah, I'll move to allow public comment for the agenda items.
Second.
It's moving second, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Good. The first item on the agenda is workforce housing sales tax, private workforce housing projects. Stephanie is going to en- enlighten us.
Let me find it, oh, the last one. Good evening, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. Uh, as the mayor said, the first item I have for you is the applications that we received for the private housing projects under the workforce housing sales tax policy. We received two applications with this round. Um, as a reminder, we have structured the policy where we have a application period that runs between April 1st and April 30th, and then another one between October 1st and October 31st. So the two applications, they are identified here by these colored rectangles. Uh, both are along Moro Street, just east of Aggieville. I provided a project summary with the presentation, just so you can kind of see the, uh, the facts of both projects at one time. Um, so here at the top part, you can see the addresses of those proposed projects, the type of housing, um, both of them are townhomes, and then the number of units, both that the, uh, the proposed number of units that the project has, and then the net number of units. The bottom half of this is really just trying to summarize the financial request that's being made. So for, uh, both of these projects, they are requesting a sales tax exemption through the IRB policy. Um, with those sales tax exemptions, we've also added to our application, um, asking the applicant to estimate the value of that sales tax exemption. Uh, when we have the resolution, bond counsel includes the total project costs, so it doesn't give you a good sense of what that value actually is for the sales tax exemption component. Uh, one of them, uh, the Moro, the 1,000 Moro Town Homes, it's located in a TIF district, so it is not eligible for the property tax abatement, those use the same revenue source. However, the Moro Flats project is requesting a property tax abatement, which we'll get into in a little bit more detail. You can see here the total project cost for both projects, as well as what their total request is for the workforce housing sales tax dollars. One thing I would note is, um, there's several different, uh, kind of caps that we've put into the policy. Um, one of those, for example, is like no more than $25,000 per unit. Um, another is that no request can exceed $250,000 or $350,000 if in a TIF district. Um, but for both of these projects, what was the limiting factor was the 10% cap that we placed, where no more than 10% of the total project cost can come from workforce housing. So I would just, um, I would just make that note to the commission. Uh, and then you can see here the, the dollar per unit for, um, based on the request. Um, also included is the property values for 2025, and then the estimated evaluation. Um, I did not include it unfortunately on the slide, but I wanted to share that for the 1,000 Moro Town Homes, um, today it generates about $6,000 in property tax. Uh, if the proposed project were to occur, it would generate about $36,000 in property tax revenue. Um, and I noted that this was in a TIF. Uh, it would generate about $400,000 in revenue for the TIF. Um, so the TIF expires in 2038, so in that time period, it would, um, that's the amount that it would generate for, uh, the TIF revenue. Um, if we did not have this project request, and that property just sat as it is right now, it would take about six years to, um, generate, or sorry, um, let me start over. So there, the applicants requesting $215,000 in workforce housing sales tax, it would take, um, about six years to generate that in the TIF, or the, it would be paid off, um, the amount of revenue. I'm not saying that well. Um, basically, it's going to generate more money for the TIF than if it just stayed, uh, than what we, what they're requesting in workforce housing dollars. There we go. Um, oh, and then for Moro Flats, today it generates $2,400 in property tax revenue. Uh, with the proposed project, it would generate $13,000 a year in proposed revenue. Just as a reminder, they are requesting a, uh, property tax abatement, so some of that would be deferred, some of that, uh, increment. Both projects are located within the residential development incentive zone. Uh, for the IRB abatement, uh, project has to be located in this area per the policy. Um, and then you'll note here that the project location for the, uh, 1,000 Moro Town Homes, it's within that TIF area. There, uh, early on, when we were talking about our workforce housing policy, we had a scoring matrix. At one point, that matrix was actually included as part of the policy, and then it was removed to give the commission maximum flexibility with having those criteria change over the years. Um, we, uh, staff still used, um, some kind of iteration of this, but it's really more, you know, if we had 10 projects and you wanted to say, okay, we only want to fund five, it would give you an opportunity to kind of draw a red line and then fund everything potentially above that. Um, that's not, I guess in, in theory, that would work well, that's not, I don't think how it would work in practice. Um, there's going to be some projects that don't score well, maybe with this matrix, that are really good projects. It's just hard to predict, um, kind of every, uh, every aspect that would make a good project. Uh, one thing I wanted to note, and this on the project summary page as well, any of the, the numbers or letters that you see in red, those have been revised by staff. Um, either, so for here, um, the total workforce housing request, it actually exceeded that 215,000, but again, since there was a 10% cap, so we revised this, uh, to, to reflect that cap. Same here, um, this applicant, they said that they fulfilled a district plan, um, but this project actually isn't within Aggieville or downtown or another, um, district plan that was adopted by the comp plan, so we reflected that score as zero. Moving on to the Moro Flats abatement, um, we are proposing using a sim- similar methodology that we have the last several abatements that you've seen, um, using total investment and then the number of units that are leased within that workforce range. And so here is the performance table that we would use. Um, after the projects completed, we would determine the percentage of the total investment that they had made. Um, so you can see the next column over, that based on their $800,000 proposed project cost, you can see the minimum investment they would have to make to be within each of those three tiers. Um, so those three tiers would be set as soon as the project's completed, and then each year, uh, we would, uh, determine the number of units that were leased within that workforce range, and then that would determine the amount of abatement that they would receive. So let's say, um, as an example, that they made an investment of $650,000, so they're in this tier two, and then every year after that, if they had, um, five of their units, they could receive 75% of that increment, um, or of, of that abatement, um, and, and so on. Uh, again, the abatement is based on a performance of the property. Uh, we will evaluate this each year, meaning that staff will review lease agreements to make sure that they are being leased, first that they are being leased, and then second, to make sure they're being leased within that workforce housing range. Uh, we would also propose doing an annual payment, like we have, um, for some, some prior abatement requests, meaning that this is the amount that the commission would receive in property ta- or that the taxing entities would receive in property tax over the next 10 years. Um, just to give you a sense, 2,300, um, this $2,325, that is what the property currently generates today. The, the numbers here are, um, calculated using a 5% increase year over year. Uh, so when we look at the current conditions of the property, um, in years one through 10, and if the abatement were approved, it would generate, uh, the total ad valorem that all the taxing entities would receive is just under $23,000. And then you can see, uh, see from years 11 through 12, under the current conditions, what it would generate for property tax, and then, um, how much would go back to, to the taxing entities with this project improvement. Um, and then at the, at the, um, the bottom line there, that's all 20 years to, uh, totaled together. So there's a 230% increase in property tax revenue being generated by this project. Uh, so just a summary of that abatement, um, the, if the commission would like us to move forward with an agreement, um, with the developer, we would, um, they, it would be a performance based with, based on the annual, or the initial investment, as well as the lease level, uh, the lease levels that are, um, uh, evaluated annually. Uh, the taxing entities would continue to receive, um, at minimum what they do today, um, so that would be between $2,300 and $3,600 a year over the next 10 years. Um, so moving back on to the workforce housing side of things, uh, this slide here just prevent, or presents an overall balance of what your workforce housing and sales tax numbers are. Uh, this is as of January of 2025, there is a couple month delay in getting those revenues and reflecting them. Um, so we have received to date about $1.5 million. Um, you can see here the expenditures, those, um, you know, those checks that we've actually written out of that funding account. Um, most of those have gone to Manhattan, or actually, all of them have gone to Manhattan Housing Authority for various projects that they're working on. And then the future commitments, um, the, the Amber Point, when I put this together, it wasn't a, a done deal. Um, last week you took action to provide, um, some fee incentives for that project, so now it can be moved up, um, outside of that pending. Um, this future commitments does include the two requests that you have this evening in, uh, totaling $295,000. And so with those projects, um, all of the requests that you've received to date and what you funded, you would still have about $712,000 left, um, of workforce housing sales tax. So a summary of the requests before you, um, you can see here the total number of units, what that total investment it would be, the workforce housing request for each project, um, and then again, both projects are seeking a sales tax exemption. Um, the value of that is on, I think it's the second or third slide, and then the property tax abatement that's being requested for Moro Flats, um, would be, that increment is about $10,000, $10,800 a year, and you can see there over the 10-year period, the value of that. Uh, and then again, the workforce housing total request is $295,000 for both projects. Uh, for, as, we've talked quite a bit about accountability for any of our, our housing projects, and at this time, um, staff would recommend that for, um, the one, for the 1,000 Moro Town Home project, where there's not that IRB abatement, that we have a three-year performance period, and if they do not perform during that, that three years, meaning that the rent rates are outside of that workforce housing range, there would be a grant repayment. For Moro Flats, this one's a little bit, uh, I'll say it's a little bit easier, only in the sense that we would tie the performance back to the IRB. So if the, uh, if the units aren't leased, or if they're not leased within that workforce housing rate, then that would reduce the amount of increment or, um, potentially just, uh, cease that, that abatement altogether. So there's already kind of that checks and balances in play for Moro Flats. Um, certainly, if you have other ideas of how you would like to see this accountability, um, we would be willing to, to take that feedback. Um, I would just add that the more, uh, time period that we add to this, or the more kind of strings that we attach, it is going to take more staff time to oversee it. Um, and we're already starting to kind of think of some, um, other ways to approach this that we could bring you before the October round. Um, so if you have, again, if you have any feedback, we would be, we'd be happy to take that. Uh, that is, oh, let me go back. Um, that is the end of my presentation. I would be happy to, uh, answer any questions that you may have. We do have both of the developers, uh, here with us this evening. One of them might be, oh, here, he's going to be running late.
Yep. Um, questions for Stephanie?
I mean, I, I have a couple, so we'll discuss tonight, Stephanie, and then we'll see these for formal action.
We're targeting, uh, the 6/17 meeting date, just, uh, and we'll have, for the IRB, for the, uh, grant agreements for these.
And we'll, those, those can just come on consent, correct?
We'll have to have a public hearing if you want to move forward with the abatement, but the other ones, yes, you could do those on consent.
Okay. Um, I do appreciate the, oh, funding and, and showing that, laying that slide out, the, I don't know what slide it was now. Towards the end.
Oh, the workforce housing.
Yeah, just so that we can see the overall, that one. I really liked that slide, I appreciate that being there. Um, on the, the project scoring, um, and I know, kind of shared this with you, we hadn't really discussed what those would be, that scoring matrix would be, so it's hard to put, uh, you know, too much, um, weight on that scoring, uh, especially with only two applications. Uh, and, and I think if we could, not necessarily today, because we're still looking through this, but spend some time figuring out where we'd want those scores to be and, and what the matrix needs to be, I don't have any brilliant ideas for that, but just having more discussion around, around some of that, so, um, yeah, those are just my initial thoughts.
Sure, what we could do is, um, is if the commission has some ideas of what they might would like to have in this table, we can bring that to you before that October round opens up. And then you can have some input on, um, really, I think it's also a tool for developers to understand the types of projects that you're wanting to fund. So if there's very specific things that you would like to add here, more of an indication to a developer, this is the type of project we want. Um, I think that would be great, to make sure you're getting the types of projects and also developers understand your expectations.
I agree, and, and so that they know, kind of what, yeah, what score we want them to get. I would say my biggest thing with it is it feels like there's a lot of points, but it's all or none on each of those, and so trying to figure out, um, how, you know, how we can better look at that, so maybe there's more of a, a range where somebody can get more points on one cat- like, have a little wiggle room on certain things, so it's not all or none.
Yeah, that, we would welcome that feedback from the people.
Okay.
Um, in the Moro Flats application, there was a page with like, some property tax abatement comparisons, was that, I mean, I'm assuming it's not relevant, since they can't, we can't do a property tax abatement in there.
Moro Flats, we can't.
Or, not Moro Flats, the, the 1,000 Moro, yeah.
Correct, I'd have to go back and look at the application to see what you're referencing, but we cannot do a property tax abatement. Uh, and the applicants here, they may can speak to why they had included that in their application.
Okay. And then, uh, the 1,000 Moro, are those all one-bedroom?
I can't answer that.
Okay, yes, they are. Okay, um, I think that's all I had.
Do you have questions for either applicant? They both, um, I just, there's some materials, if you have questions for them, I can pull those up.
Um, I would just agree with Ja- um, with Jamie, it seems to me that, you know, located on a vacant lot, it's either there or not. I mean, some of those, um, adaptive use of the building, you might get one point if it's not a great adaptive, you know, I mean, it seems there should be a little bit of a sliding scale there. Um, but I do think it's important that we define our scoring quickly, because otherwise people are going to come back to us in October and say, well, you gave this person the okay with only seven points on the, you know, out of 19, which is...
Well, one thing, and I think I said this before, I like to encourage people to get on with the program, to say, if you come early, you may have a better chance, because we don't have much to compare you to, and, um, but guess what, if you are on a vacant lot, you could really get it, but if you wait around, uh, there may not be much money, or we may have narrowed things, we, we need it in every category of housing, and maybe we all get it in one, and now we're going to switch to another. So it's like, you know, get into the game early with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also think that it'd be good to include a fiscal note, because with these things coming online, we're going to need more people checking and making sure everything's as it should be. And, um, I don't know if those, you know, that position would come out of our, our tax dollars for housing, or how, you know...
I think you asked that already once, and I thought we said we'd be willing to, to fund that out of the money.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
But, uh, you know, it, that is a good point, Karen, is that, like, Stephanie's staff only has a certain amount of capacity. Um, and if we, the more we add to this, the more it's going to take, um, and that's a decision that we can make, certainly, um, but I think it's something that we need to be aware of, and...
And put it in the chart and in the numbers, so that's less money we have to spend.
That would be, I think, helpful, too. Um, I, I guess I, I do have some, at least kind of a, maybe a thought-provoking question for the two applicants. Um, I'm kind of curious, uh, just the thought and design process of how you two came to choose these two specific projects to fit into this, if you could kind of go into that and like, talk about, I'm curious how our parameters kind of led you to these projects.
Excuse me, Tyler Holloman with Frontier Development Group. Um, I am the applicant along with Ben for the, uh, Moro Flats project. Um, so, as you can see on the slide here, we have a, a red zero on the fulfills district plan. And I told Stephanie that I initially had scored ours as fulfilling a district plan, uh, because we're within the redevelopment zone. So I can't speak for, for Zach, but I can say that for the Moro Flat application, uh, we tried to identify a tract within the redevelopment zone. Uh, that was our, yep, that was our primary purpose, so I, I know based on previous conversations, um, both, uh, in public and with Stephanie, that the redevelopment, uh, residential development incentive zone was kind of the area that was targeted for this redevelopment. And specifically for the Moro Flats project, uh, you know, it's, it's a pretty straightforward, pretty simple project, but, uh, Ben and I were excited to advance it, because it is on a, just a, a traditional, uh, ward lot, and so we thought this would be kind of a unique opportunity to advance a project and show what could be possible within this development incentive zone with just one existing lot, uh, because it is difficult to redevelop, uh, you know, things affordably, but we thought if, if we could advance this and show, this is what works with current zoning, and this is what might work on an, on a, uh, you know, existing ward lot, um, that that might be able, we might be able to spur, um, additional development, or just show the public that, hey, this is possible within some of these lots. So, yeah, we can run through this real quick. So the, uh, again, it's nothing crazy, but we just, we took that existing lot and said, what, we took this, actually to civil, and said, what could be possible, working within the parameters of existing zoning, where we don't have to come back to a rezoning, we don't have to get a variance, we don't have to try to add, um, or adjust lot lines, and, uh, and this is a concept that we were able to come up with. But, yeah, to answer, I don't know if that answered your, uh, question, Peter, with the...
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I, I, I observed that both of these are, are one-bedroom, they're fairly small, um, and, you know, I'm, I'm, to the, to the letter of our policy, these do fit, I'm kind of wondering how we might be able to get a little bit more value out of, uh, out of our, our dollars. Um, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a fine idea, trying to maximize the units on a lot, um, but a one-bedroom unit is gonna, you're, you're gonna limit your, your, uh, market there.
Sure.
Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of curious how we might be able to, to increase the value that we get out of these, these workforce housing dollars.
Yep, and I think that's a great point, and again, I'll, I'll let Zach speak to his project, but, um, you know, when we were looking at this, we, we knew that this was going to be different than like the Manhattan infill housing project that we're trying to advance, uh, because, you know, that project has three-bedroom, two-bath garage, and you know, it's, it's designed as a larger product. Um, that's really, really difficult to do within this kind of infill redevelopment area. The other thing that, um, I, I think actually both applications, um, that you have before you are quite a bit under the $25,000 limit, so that's why we, we got, at least Ben, my thought, uh, this is kind of a exciting opportunity to, to bring you guys something that you don't have to incentivize the full $25,000 per unit, but I get your point, that, you know, this is just one-bedroom units, that's just all that we were able to, uh, to make pencil, and this is still a really, really tight project, even with the three requests that we have before you.
Yeah. Do you have a, a rendering of the outside? I'm kind of curious what that would look like.
It is nothing fancy. Um, so, all we did was just attach this, just to show that our, our plan is to make this fit within the neighborhood.
Okay.
And, again, that's part of why we're excited about this specific project, is because if you look, from the street, our intention is to make it look like a house. Uh, and if you go back to the housing market analysis that we had, they talk about missing middle housing, they talk about how, you know, cities that with smart redevelopment policies encourage redevelopment within our existing neighborhoods that fit the look and the aesthetics of the, of the neighborhood. Um, so that's why we included this picture. I do have a little bit better pictures, this is actually from a recent workforce housing project that we did, um, so just for interiors, again, nothing crazy, uh, but this is from a recent project we did in Wamigo, very similar, um, finishes we would anticipate for, for this project.
So you have a hallway down the middle of those?
Yeah, so, this would be, they all have exterior doors, so.
Okay.
Wrapped with sidewalks, so everything, there'd be no interior corridor, again, trying to just, uh, make it feel more like a attached, or attached.
So just, it'd have kind of a front porch, and then, but you'd have to walk around the sides to get to your apartment.
Yep, exactly.
Interesting, okay, um, okay. What, what would you change if you, if you were making these rules, or like, had total control to get the most bang for our dollar, what, what would you change in this project?
Well, I, I think there's been some good comments that have been made tonight about the scoring criteria, I think for, for us, especially, you know, I was a little bit embarrassed to come before you guys tonight with this, with a low score, um, but I, I think having that kind of sliding scale makes a lot of sense. Um, I do recognize, though, that it's difficult to come up with a scoring criteria that's going to, you know, work across the board for all projects, but I think Jamie's point of, uh, you know, having some sort of, um, you know, sliding scale would be helpful. For this specific project, again, I, I don't know that I would change a lot, this is, we, when Ben and I were looking at this, we knew that this product, uh, you know, that the, as we were trying to envision who's going to want to live here, uh, we don't necessarily envision this being, um, you know, somebody that's wanting to live in a single-family home, um, and so that's why we, we designed this with a little bit of a smaller unit, where, as we recognize, like in the Manhattan infill housing project, that serves a little bit of a different market. And so this was, this was designed to be a little bit more, uh, a little bit more dense, but still kind of fitting within the characteristic of the neighborhood.
Okay.
Tyler, just so you know, I, I questioned why you were a zero and not a five on that one, and had to, because we had been talking so much about the residential inc- that, that zone, um, so I, I kind of pushed back a little bit on, like, that should really be a five.
Stephanie got a very frantic email from me when I saw that, so, no worries.
Same for me.
Okay, questions for anybody else?
Zach, would you like to come up and share some thoughts?
I should add, there's no bad score, like, it's really, at this point, it's just informational.
It's just a score.
Do you read this in presentation?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but I want to answer all their questions, so, to, I, I think one thing you just said, um, about the scoring thing, I think if you, if you actually got 20 of those applications, I think the seven that they scored would be in the 75th percentile of applications that you get, because they cancel each other out, so if you get one, you can't get the other one. And if you, if you, if you get two of them, there's no way you can get the third one. So the, a 12 would be in the 95th percentile, I mean, we can't come up with a better project to fit the program. Um, I don't, you can't get a 19, so, I, it's just not possible with the way they cancel each other out.
Sure.
So I think a seven's actually a really good score.
Yeah, I, I really didn't pay much attention.
Just like when you're on this side of it, you know what I mean? Like, to get a seven's still a dang good score. I think one thing you could change would be to include that entire residential development zone, and maybe create scoring matrices within that zone, so like the project at Moro Flats, instead of beginning a five, maybe it gets a three, you know, but they're, they're definitely redeveloping on infill, and I'm not trying to like promote their project, I have nothing to do with it, I've just, it's a feeling that when you try to bring something before you guys, it's really difficult, um, to, to score. Ours is kind of unique in the sense that it falls within the TIF district, so all of our increment goes back to the city, uh, for Aggieville. So it's a great, it's a great thing for Manhattan, in the sense that it's going to quickly help fund, um, all the infrastructure improvements right now that we're doing in Aggieville, and every dollar of the increment goes to that. I think also, what we're trying to do is, uh, my wife and I were on a walk the other day, and there was one of those, uh, boxes that had food in it, and there was a gentleman that went up to that box, and, uh, and I don't know if it's right to say it, and I don't, it's like, my initial thought was, man, he really needs that, that box, um, it's going to come in handy for him. The guy went in and he took out, the box was completely full of food, and he went in and he took two things out of it, and he left. And it kind of struck me like, man, I bet he needed more than two things, but he only took two. And so, with every one of these projects that we're bringing before you, we're really looking at it in the sense of, we're not trying to take six incentive programs to make one of these things work. On a lot of ours, we're just taking one, on some of them, we take two. But, uh, we are being cognizant of that, and I, I think that's something important, just to take, take into account. Um, one thing is interesting, we have done two incentive projects that you guys have helped fund, either, uh, one of them just has IRB, uh, sales tax, and one of them has IRB, sales tax, uh, and, uh, property tax abatement. And the interesting thing about, uh, our unit mix is those are all one-bedrooms as well. Commissioner Opel, and of all of our 14 that were, are currently under structure, under construction, they're all leased. One of them's located at 1011 Laramie, the other one's at 827 Morrow. And we're, we're talking about workforce housing dollars. It's kind of interesting how the, the tenant mix fell out at those two locations.
I mean, so I think this is piggybacking on Peter's earlier question. But how do we get our, I mean, this is an opinion and Tyler, if you have one too. How are we getting our workforce housing sales tax to work for larger units? And it, and that might not be an answer.
There's two, there's two parts to that answer. One, culturally, I think we changed with COVID. And so we used to have a ton of four bedroom units and a ton of three bedroom units. And that demand for those two products has significantly gone down because people want to live more on their own. I think two bedroom units already kind of fell into that mix a little bit more before that. But one bedroom units have, have drastically taken off. The other interesting thing about one bedroom units is, is they're more expensive to build. So we have a lack of them in the community. We called in January to a, a large apartment place here and asked what their, what their availability was right across the street from Aggieville. So I'm not going to be too cryptic about it. And they were already full for next year. So we have a lack of one bedrooms because one bedrooms cost more to build. If you think about it, a bedroom's cheap to build because it's just carpet and paint and sheet rock. A kitchen is where all the money is. And so for every one bedroom you have to build, you have to build a whole kitchen. If you build a four bedroom, you're still only building one kitchen. And so it's just culturally, things have shifted a little bit. So I think that's part of it. And then I think the other part is, is that we, our supply of one bedrooms right now is really low. And so it helps to have a diversity of what we're doing. We were, we were, we're, just want to say thank you. We were granted a sales tax exemption last week on the consent agenda. All those units are going to be three bedroom, two and a half bath with a two car garage. What's difficult about it in the infill sense is, is that when you say, how can we get more bang for our buck? And that's a great question. But there's a difference between units and bedrooms. And to the zoning laws, we just did a major change on the MDC. And that's the only reason that you're really seeing either one of these projects come forward. Neither one of these would come forward if those MDC changes hadn't have been made. And so if you want real world practicality about the, the things that planning and development are doing, like neither one of these would have been possible, even with the incentives, if those MDC changes hadn't have been made. The other thing that is really interesting about, I don't know how to do this, Stephanie, I'm sorry. So the upcoming year, we're going to build 35 townhomes. They're all going to be in a workforce housing sales tax price range. And so like I talked about, 15 of those are going to have two things. 16 of them are going to have one thing and three of them are going to have none. So I think there's a, there's, there can be a public perception of, why are these people coming to get all this money? They don't need this money. We never got that money. And I was just, we're, we're not trying to abuse the system. And I want to make that really clear. We're just taking what we need. And the other thing that's, the last point I'll make that I think is just kind of apropos to this is that it's, it's, it is a mix between zoning and it is a mix between the incentives. And it's, you just, you have to play this game. And if we're, if, I say play this game, play this game to make it fit into the program. And so if there are expectations or there are things that you guys would like to see, the earlier you identify those is super helpful as a developer because then we can tailor the projects that we're looking for, actively like out looking for, to meet what it is that you're looking for. And I think that's the best way to do it. And I guess I have one other point. It's like, we have $712,000 left in that deal that you guys sitting at this dais have full discretion over handing out. Okay, there's 712, that was as of January 1st. So it's probably closer to a million dollars right now. Okay, and you got two applications in total, two. And so it's difficult to do this. If it was easy, people would come and just say, hey, I have, I'm gonna throw a project up here. Please give me some money. But even with this money, it's still really hard to do this right now. And so I just want to tell you guys, thank you. It's a, it's super helpful. It's making, it's making Manhattan better in the sense that we're providing some really quality housing units. And I'm just really appreciative, so thank you.
Would anyone in the public like to make a comment? All right, would anyone in the public like to make a comment? Please come forward, give your name and then go sign in over there.
Donna Shankhamlin, 1922 Leavenworth. I'm glad that the discussion is ongoing with regard to criteria. And I'm glad that we acknowledge that the first set are going to be the trials. But as you accumulate proposals and make awards, I think it should be understandable that you look back at the bulk of the awards and see how that's changing the profile of housing affordability here. One thing that is missing here is any discussion of tenure. That is to say, ownership versus renting. And I think that the discussion should include the possibility of shared equity housing, such as limited equity cooperatives. We've had two longstanding examples on Allen Road that offered affordability and equity. And I think that as an incentive for the workforce to stay here, even if they move from a small or to a one bedroom to a larger, that is significant for keeping employees here, the opportunity to earn equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would only just like to say, just as a note, there are many other mechanisms we could be using. And many places like Tulsa and Topeka are using down payment assistance, which would then get someone into owning and building equity. So I think we shouldn't just look at this one sort of way of doing it.
Yeah, I agree Karen. I think like, I mean, Zach brought up a good point that we only had two applicants. So if we keep doing this, we're never gonna spend all of this money. And I don't think that we should spend it just because it's burning a hole in our pockets. But we have a lot of, there are a lot of different things that we can, we could try. You know, I, I, I don't think we should completely abandon this idea. I, I hope we have a discussion tonight about different type of criteria we want to look at for the next round. And I think that that's certainly in line with what we've talked about. So, yeah, let's, let's kind of be flexible and creative.
Yeah, and I know when we went into this, we talked about like, let's get this going so we can try out something and then keep adding. And I think, you know, we need to keep adding tools and, and spending the, the money, not just to spend it, but because we have such a need. And so the quicker we can be responsive to that, knowing that it's sitting there is not providing housing to anyone. I am very appreciative of the projects that came forward. I think we were, we're hopeful there would be more projects that would come forward, but excited for both of those. And just, I mean, just in general regarding these, they would, they would have my support for, for all of the requests tonight. But yeah, Peter, I'm, I'm with you of let's, and Karen, like let's keep figuring out what else we can add. And not to keep tasking Stephanie's team with more work to do. But I, I mean, I think we just need to keep figuring out what that is. Would love to hear from the development community of how we can get things going and looking. I mean, we heard from Zach that one bedrooms are really in demand. But, you know, do we need to be refining this if, if those demands are changing or how can we meet? I think more of the families, we hear that a lot about families. And how can we have options that will support families as well using this, this money? So I'm, I'm just excited about everything tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of what I was leaning towards with this. Like, you know, if we have a market for one bedrooms, and I'm sure we do, but also like, I don't want to go through another round and only get a bunch of one bedroom apartments, right? Because, you know, I think about like, a single mom has got two kids, right? And she can't live in a one bedroom apartment. Like, let's try and, yeah, kind of be more universal, I guess, in that, in that incentive. So like.
But realistically, she may be living in her car with those two kids.
Wow.
That provides some very low income housing.
Yeah.
Okay, Jamie.
Uh, no, I mean, I was just gonna say, assuming that that's, that's where, I mean, we hear that. I, I don't know that I can say that what the exact demand is on the bedroom counts. But that was only giving me my thought of, of trying to figure out what we really need and keep targeting that way. I know we've heard we need it in all, all levels of housing. I don't know that we've ever talked specifically about how many bedrooms per unit we need. And I don't even know if that data exists.
I, I would say that developers are gonna build what they think they can lease and what they think they can sell. So if they're coming to you with one bedrooms, both of the proposals, that must be the, the demand. We can look to see how we can collect that information. But that wasn't even part of our housing market analysis because it's so difficult and it can change so quickly. The other thing I would add, Commissioner Opel, you asked about, you know, if you could change one thing about this policy, what would it be? And both of them alluded to this, but I don't think it was as maybe direct that it caught your attention. And I, I shared at the beginning, this 10% cap, that was really a limiting factor. And I think that might be one of the reasons why these applications. I've heard from others that were interested, like it's not even worth us trying to go through this and make such a small dent in our project. So that is something that we could consider is increasing that, that percentage of the total project cost that can come from workforce housing. It might be more impactful and you might be able to see some additional product types.
I did, I did notice that, I think it was in the Morrow Flats, there was a pro forma, kind of here's what we're charged for rent with and without. And it was about 10% of the rent that, that it would be able to cover. You know, and you're right, like it, it is kind of a, like 10, it, it's not nothing. But it's, it's, I wonder what kind of value we're getting. What about you, Stephanie? What would you change about this if you could?
I have a whole lot of changes that I will suggest. Again, I think it would be great if we could come back before you, before our October round and just get, you know, we, we will have learned from this. I think that the scoring criteria, it definitely needs some, some work if that is a tool that you want to use. So we can work on that. I think revisiting the 10% cap would be, would be a good thing. But what I'd also like to do is have a kind of a round table with our development community, those that have applied, those that did not apply, and just say, what kept you from applying? What would you change? And I think that gives a really, would give really good feedback and perspective that we can take into consideration.
Yeah. I, I, I did hear what Donna said and I, I really, I've always kind of admired that co-op out there. I think it's a really cool model and I wish we had it, I wish we had more of them. You know, because as someone who's going through a very expensive foundation project in my house, yes, equity is nice, but all of that equity is going into fixing my house. So it's kind of a good balance between renting and, and still having some ownership. Is there anything that we could change to, like, I know the city of Manhattan is not going to start a co-op like that. But is there anything that's prevented that from happening in the past?
I would have to work with individuals like Donna and some others just to see. Right now, the policy doesn't prohibit that type of structure. So those individuals could apply under this policy and get a project going. I'm guessing that that, that, that cap of the $250,000 of a total, that can go to the total project, that's probably limiting. If you're gonna do some sort of cooperative, that's probably not enough to get that project up and going. It would be my guess, but again, I, I am no expert in that field.
Yeah, the Manhattan area housing partnership houses in Northview, after they've been, gotten the tax credits for 15 years, they revert to Manhattan area housing partnership with the ability to give the people who are living there the first option if they want to buy that. And some do and some don't.
Yeah. And I, you know, something like that may, it may be appropriate for, for us to be more flexible. You know, if it's, if it's gonna be, that, to me, that seems like much more impact. At least to those people who, who may live there anyways. So that's something that I would probably be more flexible and supporting.
You know, just another idea, both of these are rental projects. But our workforce housing sales tax, I mean, can go for owner.
Yes.
Or, or ones for sale. So I mean, I've just seen what we can do to get that going. That's just a thought I had of trying to get more homeownership out of this.
Sure.
I don't know, thoughts on that?
So both of, since both the projects are applying for the sales tax exemption, that has to also be rental. I think it goes back to if we raise that 10% cap, maybe they don't need that exemption. And then they could look at the owner occupied type of product. The other thing I would say is right now, our workforce housing policy does say that you have to have a net of two or more units. So you would have to do a, the townhome projects that they, that they're proposing would work because it is generating more than two. But if you wanted to focus on a single family detached kind of house, this policy right now, the way it's written, actually any of our incentives, it would not work because you're having to generate more than those two units.
That is, that, that do bring up a good point. And that's something that I, I've kind of thought about with this money is, you know, we've got the, the housing, what, out of the CDBG.
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation, that's the word I was thinking of. You know, would we be able to do something like that with this money? You know, because it does kind, it does still go into that same bucket of housing, or at least we could limit it. But I know the challenging part with, with for sale homes is that, I mean, we can, we really can control that first sale.
Right.
And I know we've talked about, you know, having.
Debt restrictions and things.
Restrictions and stuff, that gets really challenging. But again, like if we're getting those houses into the market, I think that could still be, especially those older homes that are probably smaller and honestly more appropriate, or at least like, they're, they're just appropriately sized. I think we, generally in America, we build houses that are way too big nowadays. But, you know, if, if we're, if we're also revitalizing some of those older neighborhoods and making those, those houses more livable and, and sellable, I think that's still, could be a benefit.
It is interesting to look at some of the houses that were thought of as being the creme de la creme 40 years ago. And now they're way too small for people, or at least people feel that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we Americans do want, you know, eight bedrooms and.
Yeah, I think I saw the average house for, or average size for a starter home now is like 2,300 square feet. And that's a lot. It's a lot, so. Yeah, if we can keep some of those houses in the market and, and keep them still thriving, I think that, that would be an appropriate use of this money too. So maybe, maybe that's what we look at.
Yeah, appreciate that feedback.
There's no action required on this if we're all ready for the next one. It's the 2025 Street Maintenance and Construction Project.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we have clear direction from the commission on that item, Mayor McCullough. And, and what I'm hearing is that you all are comfortable moving forward with these two grants as is. And so you'll be prepared to take action on them in June.
And the abatement and sales tax exemption.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for all of the options.
I think so. It's, uh, yeah, it, it's, it's an experiment and these are the first results.
Thank you, guys.
And here comes our new director. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Just messing it up, you can do it.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. Before Brian gets started, I did want to just make a quick formal announcement that we have appointed Mr. Brian Johnson to be our new Public Works Director. Very grateful to the work that Assistant City Manager Wyatt Thompson did for us and the Public Works Department over the last 10 months. But we're also very excited about this next chapter in our Public Works Department. So Brian has been with the department since 2008. And on his first day on the job, we found out that we got in BATHS. And so he launched into that project. And just since then, he has certainly demonstrated the skills and experience to, to move our community forward. So very excited for our next chapter in Public Works. So Brian, without further ado, your first street maintenance update as Public Works Director.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Here tonight, this topic of street maintenance.
You mean Director of Public Works?
Yeah, there's that too, yeah. One hat's enough for now. Street maintenance update for spring 2025. We've been doing these every six months for the last couple of years now, trying to keep everybody informed as to what we got going on and what's gonna be open, what's gonna be closed and what streets are on the agenda for this year. And then also talking about the financials. So we've broken this up into two separate presentations. The first one will go over kind of what's going to be under construction this year. And then the second one will be part of the financial structure for the street, special street maintenance tax. As you know, we're in year nine of that. That expires December 31st of next year. So we are starting to get towards the end of that first initial point to special street sales tax that we issued. So the agenda, Part A, review streets currently under construction. There's quite a few of them out there. Then we're gonna review some street projects that are scheduled for 2025. We have, as you know, you've awarded several projects for 2025 already. Then we're gonna review the tenure of street maintenance. Then we're going to review the 10-year street maintenance that we've completed with the sales tax and with special street and highway dollars. We're going to look at the five-year CIP street list also, and then also review five-year maintenance list. So with that, then we'll move to the agenda that's Part B, which is reviewing the pavement condition index, the PCI. We'll review past, present and future street maintenance funding, not only from the general fund and special street and highway fund, also from special street maintenance fund. If you recall, special street and highway is gas tax dollars that we get back from the federal government. So when you put a gallon of gas in your car, you pay roughly 18 cents of tax to the federal government and we get back a portion of that through special street highway fund. Then we'll review some options for future street maintenance also. So completed streets, this one is just about ready to open. The traffic signal is operational. Dennison is just getting the last few touch-ups and we anticipate this intersection opening by Friday of this week. So we're very happy for that. It's been closed for a while, carries a lot of traffic. This actually was part of our pledge to DHS when INBATH came. We're finally fulfilling that $5 million obligation. Those dual left turn lanes into INBATH and then dual left turn lanes on all sides of the intersection. So that one will be opening Friday. Houston Street just opened this afternoon from Third Street to Fifth Street. Some minor touch-ups left to be done on that, but that one is open. Landscaping, plantings, irrigation, all of that stuff, some of that yet to be completed. But the roadway is open. It's got the bulbouts at Fourth Street, so we're trying to help some pads get across the street down there because it is pretty tight as you transition from east to west. So we're pretty happy that this one is done and ready to be opened. So this is one that we recently bid. It's Walters Drive. It's between Eisenhower Middle Schools over here and between TCB. There'll be two phases to this. One is in front of the school, which will happen over the summer. And then the second one will be Kirkwood to TCB, which will happen in the fall. The detour would be up Kirkwood then into Marlat for the beginning of the school year. Another street pavement that we bid recently is Allen, Browning, Candlewood and Kimball. So you can see they're kind of spread out through here. A couple of them are summer projects. So in front of Marlat School, we're going to be working there a little bit. And then also over on Allen, as we get close to Northview School. And then we'll work on TCB and Candlewood. TCB may wait till next year. We may, TCB and Kimball may wait till next year because of the roundabouts that are closed. We got a lot of traffic coming down Kimball this year. And so we may wait until the roundabout's open before we go work on that section of roadway. We're having those conversations right now with the contractor. Another project, Mill and Overlay, which just got released for bid this week. This is College Avenue from Agronomy Central to the city limits, so that north piece. This would just be a standard Mill and Overlay, inch and a half. Another project, one we wanted to do last year and we actually were short of funds, so we had to push it a year. We're really grateful for the street department for patching potholes and keeping this thing put together through the winter. We were very worried about it becoming pothole central and it made it through the winter. This is Blument between Fifth and Eleventh. Also part of that asphalt project is Yuma between Fourth and Tenth. Another one that we really wanted to get to last year and we didn't have the funds for it. Street department spent a lot of time down there keeping that patch and keeping it put together. Another one that made it through the winter and we're really happy about that. So we're going to get to this one this year and Mill and Overlay it. This is, of course, is the Anderson project. This will be starting in June. This is the water main project and rebuild the roadway. We came to you a couple of weeks ago about some options for realigning Timberlane and Bellhaven in here. We're still working on some concepts. We did have a neighborhood meeting to kick off the project between Timberlane and Connecticut last week. Had a good turnout. Had quite a few folks from the Connecticut Avenue area, the cul-de-sac down here come. Right now, we're proposing a no-left out and a no-left in on the Connecticut. We understand that that does have some pretty significant impacts for people on that roadway. We're looking at a couple of different options and I told the neighborhood I'd get back to them by next Tuesday. And we're looking at potentially doing a no-left turn during peak hours or doing a temporary signal. And the issue is, as folks go westbound and set here to turn left to go into Connecticut, because the Anderson is head-to-head, our concern is there'll be no gaps to make a left turn and you'll back people up past the church. So we're trying to figure out a way to accommodate two things here. And we're still talking with the neighborhood. In fact, one gentleman and I had a conversation just before this meeting about this, this intersection.
Now, is that, is that just during the construction that you're talking?
Yeah. It's in, this phase anticipated to be about 10 months long. So it'd be that 10 months and we'd not have left-hand turning during peak hours. So seven to nine, three to six kind of stuff. Temporary signal has some issues there because it's a three-legged intersection. So I don't know that it's going to function real well. It's going to, you're going to have to have a split phase. So we're not real crazy about the split phase idea. We did meet with the contractor this morning. We talked about some, potentially changing some phases and that doesn't work real well. So we're kind of landing on the no-left turn during the peak hours.
How do you enforce that, Brian?
We put up a sign, no-left turns and he enforces it. We have one out at Eisenhower Middle School. Yeah. Again, we're good at signs.
Does it work?
We are good at signs.
They write a lot of tickets out at Eisenhower, yes.
Writing a lot of tickets and this, the.
And the traffic control, yeah.
Effective are two different things.
Sure. And part of the no-left turn is going to be, we need the neighborhood to kind of self-enforce. They're the only ones that'll be turning left to get down in there, so.
I mean, how, that's like, if somebody lives on that street and is coming west on Anderson, how, how do they get to their, to into their neighborhood?
So two ways. You can either go down to the Signal at Sonic, turn left and then come back and turn right. Or you could go up Rebecca, Hilton Heights, come down and take a left. Those two ways.
So going completely across the intersection is?
Because I'm not head-to-head.
Okay.
So I have gaps. It's when you get head-to-head, you don't have gaps.
But you gotta cross two lanes if you're going all the way across the intersection. Or no, okay. Is Rebecca, okay, Rebecca's not.
Yeah, you'd be going westbound and any of these streets would be open. You go up to College Heights to Claflin, Westport come around.
Okay.
You go to Rebecca, go to Hilton Heights, come down. Any of those streets, as you're going westbound, you can make a right turn on.
Yeah.
So College Heights to College to Claflin, Rebecca to Hilton Heights, down to Sonic to the Signal, come back and go back east. All of those are available options. Again, it'd be just during the peak hours, so that three to six, seven to nine range. So this is a project that KDOT has going on right now, as we're all aware, up at the Dam Road and at Setchild Dual Roundabouts. KDOT's building them. They have TCB closed between the dam and the Setchild, so we're getting a lot of traffic on Marlat. Traffic on Marlat's up about 35%. We have different speed control out there. We also have different counters out there. So we've gone from about 8,000 vehicles a day to about 11, so it's a pretty significant jump. That's going to be done probably middle of next year. One more project, another KDOT project. They are building a flyover on I-70 to K-18. So to the left of the screen is the Marshall entry. This is the existing bridge. You come up, you make the turn, you go across the bridge. Very high accidents down in this area, also during high travel events. Vehicles back up onto I-70, so you get a bunch of rare ends down there. So KDOT met with us probably three or four years ago. We looked at several different options and finally KDOT settled on the flyover. So we're pretty happy that that project's going to go forward. We had heard that it was going to get cut on funding earlier this year, but it is going to move forward. So for City Crews, we're going to be focused on them.
What's the basketball rankings for?
That actually, well, so I took this out of a PowerPoint that I got from KDOT back in 2023. I was wondering if you'd catch that. So 2025 City Crew Maintenance, they're going to be focused between Hobbs and Kimball and Browning and College, specifically mostly on Hobbs through here. We also have a project down on Browning going on down here. So going to be doing a lot of work around the school this summer before school gets back in in August, so we can get out of the neighborhood.
You have several Marlat parents in the room that will be very happy.
Oh, good. I wish we were going farther down Browning, but we can't do all of that in one summer, so we'll have to come back. So one, one other item that I do want to talk about a little bit is we're going to try an on-call task order system. It actually came from a question you had, Commissioner, last fall when you asked if we had a program between big, big projects and little patching projects. And we thought about it a little bit and we came up with this task order system. So how it's going to work is we're going to take quotes on establishing prices for medium-sized repairs. So 200 square feet to 2,000 square feet. Stuff that takes more person power and people power than we have, but not big enough to call a paving company. So we're going to set prices. We're going to establish them at the beginning of the contract. And then as we get complaints or as we find potholes or whatever, we're going to issue task orders to that contractor to go do that. We have a 15-day response time in the contract, so three weeks between when we issue the task order to when they get there. And we're hoping that we get some good prices and we can take advantage of maybe some smaller or mid-sized companies that can help us out a little bit.
So would that be like a, a square yard kind of price or, okay.
Yeah, you can see, we'll establish that prices, asphalt, concrete, rock base. All of those things will be established in, whether you're working in Northview or you're working in, you know, the zoo area or you're working Setchild with still the same cost.
How are those going to get prioritized? Just kind of in order that they come in?
No, that's another great question. So the best way to get them prioritized is to use our See Click Fix system. So when you send that in, that'll automatically go to the project manager. That project manager will then rate, go out and review that and rate it on a scale and then that'll go into the task order system.
Is there extra, are there extra points if more people put in the same, the same problem?
Not really. With, it's really based on, do we think we can make another year with it or does it have to be done this year?
Okay.
That's kind of how we're going to rate them because we don't have a whole ton of money to go do a whole lot of things. It's going to be pretty much the worst of the worst. Any questions on that? That's actually out to bid and we'll be back to you in June to award that.
All right, Brian, you're, you're awarding it to like multiple companies? Is that what you're saying, like one for asphalt, one for concrete?
We have four different bid items out.
Okay.
Big patches, little patches, asphalt patches and big asphalt patches. So we'll have four different. I'm assuming we'll have four different contractors, maybe somebody's low on all of them.
Cool.
But we do have four different categories.
Okay.
2025 Street Maintenance Locations. So these are the locations that we're going to be hitting this year. Again, there's Browning, that little piece of Candlewood just off Kimball. Hudson Avenue will be later this year. We're going to bid that later in the fall and that'll go from where we stopped at Claflin down to Anderson this year. So that'll be that little piece there. These are already bidding and awarded, so they'll be starting here, oh, within the next month or so. The best way to get information on our projects is just to click on our active projects map. That takes us to a GIS overlay, arc overlay that gives us information about maps. Again, active projects, future projects, completed projects. This is really the best way to get information about projects that are happening or will be happening. We're talking about maybe linking some of this to some social media sites too, so that we can get some social media posts out of this. Again, the PIOs are really busy and they already do a whole lot for us, so it's, it's asking a lot. But we are talking to them about that. I do want to tell Andrew, thank you, because he has done a whole lot of work for us already and I really appreciate him. But this is probably the best way to get information on our sites or on our projects. We try to keep this updated once a month. Sometimes we get to it every couple of weeks, sometimes it's a month. Honestly, sometimes it's longer. It just depends on workload. But our goal is always at least once a month.
Can we save this in our commission hub or like this link? So they don't have to try to dig back through the, thank you.
It's also accessible from the city's website, just in case anyone else in the audience is interested in going and checking it out.
The brand-new city's website.
So summary of 2025, what we have on the books. Mill and Overlay various locations, approximately a million dollars on those places that I showed you earlier to be paid out of gas tax, special street and highway. We don't have any general fund dollars in street maintenance this year. We do have some special street maintenance funds for this year. We anticipate close to about $3 million by the time it's all said and done with, three, three and a half. Currently, we have about 2.7 million under contract. We got about another roughly 500,000, or I'm sorry, about a million dollars yet that we think Hudson Street will come in at. So that gets us into that mid-three range. Again, we're only generating about 3.1, so we're actually slightly over budget this year on this fund. We did have a 2.4 carryover, so we are going to eat into that carryover a little bit. And we anticipate by the end of the year, we'll be somewhere around a million, million and a half for carryover.
So we carried over 2.4 and I'm just, I, I, I know we made, collectively made the decision not to do the Mill and Overlay on Blument.
Yes.
And now we're doing that this year.
Correct.
About the same time we're having the major project on Anderson.
Okay.
Which is, they're pretty much the same, right? And it, this is, I know hindsight is 2020, but like, should we have spent that 2.4 and done Blument last year?
Well, at the time, we didn't know we were going to carry over 2.4 because there were several things that we hadn't bid.
Yeah.
That carryover would have been down to 1.4, which is getting down there. Plus, we didn't bid Valley Drive Sidewalk last year and we have quite a bit of sale or Safe Routes to School money in that. So that 1.4, if we would have bid it, would have been below a million because we have, I think, about a $700,000 cash payment out of sale or Safe Routes to School in that project. That project got bumped a year, so.
As a reminder, we were tearing up Anderson Avenue between Sunset and Aggieville, which really made our community very happy. Brian, talk about how long Blument will actually take.
Yeah, and it's a Mill and Overlay, so it's probably two weeks.
Okay.
Two to three weeks. It's not a long, you know, not a long process and obviously we're going to try to get it out in the summer.
Yeah.
When our traffic counts are low, it just, last year with what we knew at this time, it would have just been a big risk to bid that. We may have been coming to you asking for general fund dollars to write people checks.
Somehow I had forgotten about the project on, on Anderson as well, so. It's, yeah, I know it's a pain for people to drive down, but, you know, nobody's complaining that Anderson is very nice along that stretch now. And I know, you know, that stretch of Blument really needs it too, so.
Yeah. I, I really worried about that this winter. I thought that was really going to get bad.
Yeah.
Brian, what's happening with the state dollars? We're just seeing the gas tax money. I mean, is there any special highway or, you know, and Topeka did anything?
Yeah, we got our annual SDP or Surface Transportation Program allocation, federal funds exchange dollars. Couple of weeks ago, it's what it has been forever, about 650,000.
Okay.
Those dollars have been, since that program started in the 90s, it hasn't gone up. It's been the same allocation for the better part of two decades. It's just like the special street highway gas tax. There's just, it's just not building more revenue.
Okay.
We're burning more gas, but, well, we're driving more vehicle miles, but we're not burning more gas because our vehicles are more efficient. So even though there's more miles put on the roads every year, which means more wear and tear.
Sure.
We're not burning any more gas because our vehicles are more efficient.
Is there any move to charge people like me who drive a Prius for vehicle miles traveled or, I mean, what's happening?
Yeah, we can put a hat here at the back of the room if you want. Some states do have a sort of charge when you come in and get your plates. Texas, I think, is like 300 or 400. California is a couple hundred. Those are the only two states I know of. I think there's about 10 states that are talking about it. To my knowledge, I don't think Kansas has talked about it unless somebody's heard about that.
Yes. Yeah, there is. Yes, um, yeah, there is, I, I don't know if it's been implemented or not, but it, it is based on weight. Um, and I think it's, if it's under, under ten thousand pounds, it's like three hundred dollars. And if it's over, it's about four hundred dollars. And um, Jared Tremblay's got a really nice analysis for that. And it actually ended up being to the state's benefit um for that. They, or at least break even um for, for what the average electric vehicle drives.
Like a commercial plate on a semi, you pay by the ton or the pound or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Uh, so this is a map of everything completed since twenty fifteen. We have everything thrown on the map. So we have street division in orange. This is all the stuff that they've been working on. Green is special street and highway funds, there's your gas tax dollars. Sales tax funded is in the purple then, so you can see all the purple. Quite a bit done. Special street maintenance fund alone, I think, is around twenty-four million. Special street highway probably be about another seven to ten million over that timeframe. So, you know, there's thirty to thirty-five million dollars of street maintenance done uh during that ten-year period. So future items that we have identified, uh, we haven't put funding to any of these yet. We're still kinda seeing how the sales tax is gonna end the, end the end of the year. But obviously Claflin Corridor, um, North Manhattan to Seth Child, obviously that one's in pretty poor shape. Uh, before we do spend any money on that, we actually wanna do a study on that corridor study and see if three lanes, five lanes, turn lanes, lots of accidents on Claflin between Denison and Seth Child. So we're probably gonna do a, a corridor study with the M P O on that one. Try to get some ideas on how to reduce accidents through there. Uh, we're also working with K State, uh, they're looking at Claflin also between North Manhattan and Denison. So we're working with them on their master plan and uh see where that one goes. College Avenue, Dickens to Claflin, uh, some utility work needs to be done in there. Uh, large transmission main that Kevin's working on uh for twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, Kimball Wood, Candlewood to Hudson, so this is Kimball Avenue. Uh, the next piece uh to the west of what we've done so far, this would get us from Candlewood to the top of the hill to Hudson where the new pavement is that we did several years ago. So this would be the last piece on uh Kimball. Uh, got that anticipated for uh fall of twenty, or spring of twenty-seven. So a couple of years away on that. Um, that's obviously gonna be a really big project, lots of impacts there. Uh, Browning Avenue and Marlat intersection, this is a project we're partnering with the county on. The county is gonna widen Marlat between Denison and Browning. Uh, Browning intersection itself is actually in the city. So widening there, adding turn lanes, those are city costs. Uh, so we're gonna have a few dollars in some turn lanes at Browning. We're also gonna do a trail from Denison to Browning on the south side of Marlat. So we're gonna extend that trail that's there now.
To the Marlat Park, sort of?
No, we're gonna turn at Browning.
Oh.
And come south to the middle school.
Um, a lot of, I, not a lot, several people have asked me about um Marlat, getting on to um, to um Seth Child's that, that, they feel that's unsafe and there've been accidents there.
Okay, one second first.
Okay.
Uh, on the Marlat piece, we're actually gonna add some sidewalk also between Browning and Tataracs entrance.
Okay.
We get a lot of calls, people from Tataracs wanna walk and they can't because they're out open ditch to that north side. We're gonna add Kerbin, Gutter and Storms sewer and put a sidewalk on that north side. So people out of Tataracs. That came from a neighborhood meeting we had with them a couple of years ago. Uh, yes, Seth Child and Marlat. Yeah, high accident location, very severe impacts. It is a state highway, so the state actually controls that. We did get the state to put a temporary signal in there for the construction up on the roundabouts. So there is a signal there now. Uh, we've got a lot of compliments on that. A lot of people ask if it's gonna stay. That's a K dot decision, that's nothing that, that we can do. We, we can certainly put a request into K dot, ask them. But that temporary signal will be there until the end of the project, so mid to end next year. Uh, if you recall from the corridor plan, Seth Child corridor plan, actually those curves go away and Seth's or Marlat actually goes over Seth Child in the future. That's in our corridor plan, you can see it online. Uh, Blumott Expansion, possibly twenty-nine, possibly thirty. Again, Kevin has some large water vein he wants to run out of the plant uh to the west side of town. We wanna add a fifth turn lane, center turn lane there on Blumott between Fifth and Eleventh because we have a really high accident pattern, people turning left, getting into driveways and crossing intersections. We may put an island down the middle of it like what's in Aggieville, we may add a fifth center turn lane. We're not sure yet, we're still looking at accident patterns. That'd likely be a gr- uh, safety grant application. We'd probably ask K dot for some safety dollars on that, so. Safety dollars are out in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, so it's gonna be a little while, but uh.
How much room do we have along that? Like, would we have to acquire any land for that?
No, uh, Blumott actually has a really wide right of way. Uh, the right of way is back behind the sidewalk, so it's like a hundred and twenty feet. If we just add a five-foot island or if we just add a center left, I don't think we'd even impact the trees.
Oh, wow, okay.
Uh, if we wanna do something beside that, I think we would. So that's kinda why we're thinking that five-lane section or an island down the middle, one of the two. Next one on the list is Sarber Lane uh from U S twenty-four East uh over to Academy. Uh, two-lane section, open ditch, no sidewalks, not really what you want in the middle of your commercial area. But uh, we're gonna review that with K dot with the corridor plan. Uh, there's been some discussion in the past with connecting Sarber to Retail Place across T C B, uh, connect that intersection together. So there's some crossings there available. We'll see what the corridor plan says, but that's definitely an area we're gonna look at and see what we can do to make some improvements along there. Because uh, we do get a lot of complaints, especially in the spring with rain and open ditch and water setting and that sort of stuff. So get a lot of complaints and it's not pedestrian-friendly. It's two lanes, open ditch, no place to walk. So if you wanna ride your bike to Dylan's or wanna walk to Dylan's, you can't, you just flat-out can't. Um, McCall Road, T C B and Fourth Street, so that's the triangle there. Again, we're gonna review that with corridor, uh, with the corridor plan. Lots of options there. Uh, you can dual lefts, triple lefts, dual rights, lots of things there, lots of room to do some pretty cool things there. So we're gonna see what the corridor plan says about that. We obviously have quite a bit of pedestrian connectivity there on the north side also, but you're crossing five, six lanes of roadway. So it's not really the most convenient for the pedestrian. So more to come on that one, that one will obviously be a pretty, pretty big discussion in the corridor plan. It's a really busy intersection there. Uh, Hayes Drive, Kerbin, Gutter and a Trail, we're about eighty percent designed on that. Um, we were waiting until the Levy project is done and that just got over here recently. Um, we're gonna get back on that and look at that trail. The trail actually goes from McCall to Levy now and this piece would just continue from Levy over to Casement. Stag Hill, K one thirteen Rosen Cutter, that whole open ditch alignment up on Stag Hill. We still get a lot of complaints on that also. No sidewalks, no place for people to walk or bike. It's literally right off the linear trail, so people come off linear trail and they gotta ride up Stag Hill to get to their house. It's, it's not a real great situation. So we're looking at some Kerbin, Gutter and some sidewalk there, possibly some utilities. Um, we have talked with some businesses in the area about potentially a cost share, so there is some discussions going on about that. Um, obviously we'd be interested in that and we're continuing those discussions. Casement Road, right now we got Casement Road is two phases, Butterfield to Griffiths and then Griffiths to Allen. Butterfield needs a lot of help, it needs storm sewer work, it needs utility work. We actually were wanting to Mill and Overlay Butterfield this year, but we're gonna wait because it needs so much utility work. So when it rains, that Butterfield is, it's just a river. So it needs quite a bit of help and we're gonna do some utility work in there while we're doing it. Possibly next year, more likely twenty twenty-seven. Any questions on that whole giant list of streets I gotta go fix?
Um, I just wanna say, like, I really appreciate, um, I know that you and your department really focus, at least have, eh, since I've been on the commission, on pedestrian safety. I know that choices were made in the past that did not think about pedestrians at all. Uh, we have a lot of neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks and um, I, I can tell that we're really making a, an intentional effort to.
Effort, yeah.
Yeah, um, and I, I think that's really important and people notice it.
Yeah.
So, thanks for that.
Only from a transportation perspective, but when you see people out walking at night, just having a nice walk in it. It's a recreational thing too, so.
Yeah.
It's a quality of life issue.
Yeah, well, especially the point about like the, the east side Dylan's, I mean.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't walk there.
I wouldn't get there if you had a car, yeah.
Um, so that's, that's really important.
But people do.
Yeah, it's.
You see people crossing T C B and I close my eyes every time and hope for the best.
Yep.
Yeah, I was wondering about the new breadbasket site.
Yes, on Stag Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Stag Hill's on the list, I actually talked to them about.
I mean, you know, getting there, if you had to um walk along or Riley Boulevard, I mean, there's sort of a pass.
Yeah, when we get the Valley Drive sidewalk done, we'll finally make that connection between Seventeenth and Westwood.
Uh-huh.
And then you could go down, go across the bridge, because now we have a pedestrian bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Down underneath, back around to Rosen Cutter. The problem is from Rosen Cutter to where they're at on Skyway, there's no sidewalk.
Yeah.
There's about five hundred feet there that's blank and I talked with the breadbasket about a month, six weeks ago, about doing something on that little stretch, doing a little sidewalk gap project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a bus stop there also, so.
Yeah.
If you drop somebody off on the bus, they literally step out of the bus into a ditch. There's no sidewalk, it's, it's not a good situation. So we talked about maybe moving the bus stop at the same time.
Okay, maybe Ann could, we could get some funding for that, you know?
Yeah.
That, that, yeah, concerns me because um I think, I like their new situation, but.
Yeah, it's a great building for them and it's a great location.
Harder for some people to get there.
There's a gap there, needs to be addressed, yeah, I agree with you.
Um, I had a question about the um college Mill and Overlay.
Yeah.
Um, just kinda how, I guess, and, and in general, how, how those things get prioritized? And I, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that live along there, but maybe I just haven't driven down it, didn't seem, it. I have in my mind that there are other spots that are maybe more heavily traveled that need the work more.
Sure, and traveling, the A D T does come into play when we look at those. Uh, some of it, in this case, is looking at, Marlat's gonna be closed for the better part of a year. The county's working on it, so college is gonna collect a lot more traffic. If I don't do it this year, I probably gotta get to twenty twenty-nine before I can get back. So that played into it a little bit too. A lot of it, I got feedback from the street department that they're up there patching it quite a bit, uh, so that, that feedback played into it also. Uh, we actually proposed that for last year too, that was another one that we had last year.
Okay.
So end of part A. Any more questions? Okay, let's talk about pavement condition index. So P C I, uh, you can see we go from green to failed, uh, black or brown or gray. Range from zero to a hundred, uh, eighty-five to a hundred is considered good. Uh, it's new or very new and then satisfactory is seventy to eighty-five. Our goal since twenty fifteen has been to be at a seventy. Uh, we thought that seventy was attainable, achievable. Economically, it was a good fit because it didn't, it kept us in that two to four million dollar range that we could generate with sales tax. So in twenty, I think you were on the commission in twenty fifteen, we made that decision that seventy was the number we were gonna strive for. And uh, so we're, we're looking for, to try to keep in that range. This is the overall index and I do wanna preface this by saying, this is last year's number from uh February of last year. So the whole pothole craze that happened last spring, deterioration this year, deterioration this spring was not as bad, but we would anticipate that number to come down just a touch. Because while we have had, you know, deterioration, we've also replaced roadways. One of the things that we're looking at doing, back to your question about how we prioritize. Uh, when we first set up the system in twenty fifteen, we looked at doing a, you know, clockwise or counterclockwise rotation around the city based on um like the spring cleanup map, you know, zones that you'd go around and work. In twenty fifteen, the streets just were in a condition that they were spots that couldn't wait five years. So we really picked the worst of the worst those first three or four years and went out and did them because they just couldn't wait. We couldn't ask a neighborhood to wait for five years. We've got to, we've got to a position where we think we could implement something like this so that if you were in the third or fourth year, you could wait that long. Uh, we haven't. We've got zone one through five shown, we're not picking zone one first, we're not picking zone five first, we haven't got that far yet. We're gonna wait till we get our P C I data back this fall and then we'll look at this system and I'll bring back some recommendations this fall on where we start and how we rotate around the city. But this would really help us with the expectation that a neighborhood knows in this year, somebody's gonna be here and they're gonna do work in our neighborhood. So here's kinda P C I by zones. This would be that zone one or the southwest quadrant of the city. Here's your Stag Hill, you can see why it was on the list, Stag Hill's here also. You can see why it made the list. Uh, zone two, so the northwest corner of the city. Uh, we've got Cedarhurst, Cedar Crest. Here's Kimball, this little piece of Kimball right here. You can see the, the pieces of Kimball that we've done already, how they're nice and green. Uh, Roundabout, we did a couple of years ago. Here's the north central, so kinda by campus area. Uh, our crews are actually gonna be in this area working this summer. Uh, we also have that little piece of Browning that we're gonna work on um in here, so we're gonna be working on Browning. Uh, you know, some red down here by Campus yet that we need to address. Kimball now is green and Denison will be green and green here also because we did the north campus project in this area. And then here's your red for your college piece here, Commissioner.
Yeah. Is there something about cul-de-sacs? I noticed a lot of them are red or orange. Is there something that makes them deteriorate faster?
So cul-de-sacs are notorious for staying wet with water that runs down the street. In the past, what we've done or what the, the standard practice was, is put it in that way at the back of the, at the cul-de-sac, that water will run all the way down the street, get there and take it away. We still do that, but not as much. We try to intercept more water before it gets to the cul-de-sac because typically the cul-de-sac is really flat because that's where your houses are and so the water doesn't drain on them real well. Uh, so we're trying to pick up that water before we get into the cul-de-sac to try to keep some of that drainage from, you know, heaving in the wintertime and settling in the summertime. Some of it's some design and some of it is just, you get a lot of traffic. I mean, you got five vehicles around a little circle that have five trash deliveries and five Amazon deliveries and five UPS deliveries. So some of it is also just how many vehicles go there. So here's the northeast corner of the city, zone four. Uh, here's your Butterfield, here you can see the one that needs the drainage help. Uh, we'd like to do that in twenty twenty-six, possibly twenty-seven. Casement, again, uh, this actually was just Mill and Overlay last year, so this is actually in better shape than the red that's shown. Uh, but Butterfield, we haven't touched. And then also, um, this is that Walters Drive piece up here. Uh, and then last but not least, zone five, which is downtown area. Uh, Anderson Avenue is here. Uh, done quite a bit of work on Anderson, Blumott is right here. So this is that red through Blumott. Sarber Lane here, Hayes Drive, I'm getting a feedback here. Hayes Drive is up here and then uh, Casement also is uh over here. So that's kinda the zone idea that we're looking at. We'll be back this fall with a lot more information on that and if we're gonna try to attempt to go to that system so we're going around in a counterclockwise or clockwise circle. So our current P C I assessment. Lots, almost forty-five percent of the street. And that sounds really great except for as you look out into the out years of the model. Uh, this big slug of streets that will, this twenty-sixth and County Rush, this is moving left every year. And so our concern is. That's the concern with the big green blob, which looks great except for housing rushes since two thousand and six. Starting to show their age and we're very concerned that this is gonna slide. We'll get more data this summer.
Brian, how, how bad was the storm? Like, how far back did that big snowstorm set us? Brian, how, how bad was the storm? Like, how far back did that big snowstorm set us back at all on, I mean, just deterioration of roads, any? I, I know that's a, a hard question to answer and um.
We didn't get as many pothole reports this year, and that makes me feel better, but I also know that it got really cold a couple of times last year.
Yep.
We seem to be fixing the same potholes over and over again. So that would be another indication that they're starting to get worse in their failure.
Okay.
The one project I didn't mention actually on this list, we did apply for a KDOT grant for Fort Riley Boulevard, between Westwood and Wildcat Creek, that little piece of K-teen. They were in town this week looking at that grant application, we're hoping for good news to Mill and Overlay that, possibly this fall or even next spring, so. That's a, that's an important corridor.
So how's that, wasn't there supposed to be a sidewalk get put in along that stretch?
Yeah, that's Valley Drive.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so twenty twenty-five PCI update, our last citywide, every single street in the city was in twenty eighteen. Uh, we did a collector and artorial program in twenty twenty-two, and um we're gonna start with a summer twenty twenty-five project also. Uh, we've got a firm coming in, they're going to be uh, doing every street in the city again, so we're gonna see exactly where we're setting as far as our PCI. The other thing that this does, what, it really gives us great information for our degradation tables. So when you build your street model, you have a PCI that you know, and every year that degr- degradates because it's out in the weather. This will give us a ten-year history of what those degradation tables are. So every year, like your point, what did that snowstorm do, we can look and get that data. So this is a really critical update that we're really looking forward to getting. So back to twenty fifteen, the recommendations from that twenty fifteen study, uh, the recommendation was in order to stay at a seventy, we had to spend about four million dollars a year. And at that time, our plan was about two million in sales tax, about one point one million in gas tax, and then about one million from the general fund between uh our labor that our street departments do and all of the repairs that they do through the summer, plus uh materials, concrete, asphalt, all that stuff. Pay for through the general fund. One of the big things that we need to take away from tonight is that four million dollars in twenty fifteen is now five point four million in twenty twenty-five. So there's a gap there, and every year that gap's getting wider. Current funding for twenty-four and twenty-five, uh, we're gonna spend about three point one million in sales tax. Again, that's about what we generate, so we're gonna be maybe dipping into that fund a little bit, and then about a one point three million in gas tax. Here's our total revenues from sales tax, uh, generated just over twenty-four and a half million since twenty sixteen. I'm sorry, we spent just over twenty-four million since twenty sixteen, we generated about twenty-seven. This is the slide that I was talking about earlier, seven point five percent annual increase that we've seen in our street repairs. We're generating about two percent more every year in revenue, so obviously, though that math doesn't math, as my eighth grader would say. As time goes on, it's obviously gonna get worse. So our Mill and Overlay, uh, again, about a seven point seven percent increase annually. Uh, gas tax is about zero, we've seen no increase in that. Federal Fund Exchange, STP, same thing, it's really the sales tax that's increased, that's even allowed us to do what we're doing. So special street and highway, street maintenance funding, uh, so between uh, you know, Mill and overlays in these years, salt material, concrete and stuff, those, those numbers have come down over time also, as we've leaned on that fund a little bit more to help us with operations. And then our future funding, so point two expires the end of next year. We anticipate generating about five million between now and then, that's just a rough number. So we have about five million dollars in repairs we can make until that twenty twenty-six expiration happens. Uh, we have five point one million budgeted currently for street repairs in twenty-six, so we've pretty much budgeted out that fund through next year. Uh, Kimball, Sunset College, and then a Mill and Overlay next year is gonna be pretty much that five point one million, it's gonna be close to, to zeroing out that fund. We do have a couple of uh Safe Routes to School projects still, we wanna fund through this. So we do have a little bit of Safe Routes money we wanna save for some future projects. So to stay near a seventy PCI of roughly five to five million per year needs to be dedicated, and then there is a few options for that dedication. Uh, point three five renewal generates about five and a quarter, seven mills generates about five million, and then Special Street Highway begins about that million dollars a year in gas tax. So with that, summary, funding this year is stable, but unfunded maintenance obviously is needed on several projects that I showed you throughout the, the community. Continued reliance on Special Street and Highway to fund operations is impacting future street maintenance. Uh, sales tax generating about three point one million per year at that point two, and to meet the point, the five million dollars per year, a point oh three five would be needed. Now that's not oh three five on top of the point two, that's oh three five total. So with that, questions?
No, I, I really appreciate the, the, the data about the costs.
Yeah.
Just cost for materials and.
Yeah.
Um, you know, this kinda goes into another conversation about housing, is that like, that's the cost of our sprawl. Um, and when we continue to sprawl out, that cost just continues to increase and become less and less sustainable. Um, but yeah, you know, we can't do a lot with, about the cost of asphalt and the cost of concrete, but we do have a, an obligation to keep, uh, keep these streets maintained, so um, you know, when we talk about, you know, maybe renewing the sales tax, um, I think it's really important for us all to, to keep that in mind and, and and consider that, uh, that we've gotta, we've, we, the city is feeling uh inflation as much as everybody else. Um, and if we, if we wanna continue to have safe streets and, and well-maintained streets, you know, we, we are all gonna have to, to help pitch in. It sucks, but that's just kind of the way it is.
I mean, I think, Brian, I know I emailed you some of these questions, but the, the seventy PCI, um, I, you know, I understand at a certain point, you know, we won't see a return on investment if we are at a hundred, you know, that, that's not what we want. I think that the seventy PCI, we still get a lot of complaints about roads, and, and now I, I do understand a little bit better that it's, it's a, a average across the board, so we still have, what? Twenty-five percent of our roads are in the poor and down, yeah.
Fair and less.
Um, you know, so I, I don't know where the, and maybe that, that magic number is seventy, where that return on your investment kinda goes away if you get any higher, but um, you know, just something to consider is if we're, we're looking at sales tax or, or property tax or whatever we're looking at for a renewal. Um, one thing I'd say is, is people wanna make sure that they're, we're doing enough with that or, or something, so if that means we need to look at what seventy-five looks like um versus seventy, knowing that there's still frustrations with seventy. Um, but I guess one question is, is the difference between, and, and I don't, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this, seventy and, and seventy-five or higher. Um, is that on a different type of construction or a, a more money on the front end, or is that more routine maintenance? Like, how are we, like, I guess.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how to, if I'm asking that the right way.
That's actually a great question, I'm glad you asked it. In twenty fifteen, when we did the analysis originally, we looked at four or five different PCI values, I don't know, Commissioner, if you remember, I think there was four different, like a sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five and eighty.
Okay.
And then we graphed what that would cost and the amount of labor input it would take to do that. And I can find those slides for you back in twenty fifteen, I also, part of the PCI update is we're gonna go through that. That's gonna be analyzed on, what does that take to go up or down, you know? If we're happy with a sixty-five, then that's what this number is, or if we want a seventy-five. So we did analyze that in twenty fifteen, I don't have those slides in here, but I can certainly get them to you.
Oh, I think, I mean, just when we're looking at that PCI, I mean, I'm excited to see that, that report come through and then, you know, see what that, that plan is. Um, you know, there's, in my mind, I'm like, are we, are we building everything to the hundred?
Yeah.
Um, or do we, do we start, oh, this is, sounds terrible to say, but build to eighty-five with more maintenance throughout?
Yeah.
Um, and so I just don't know how.
That trade-off, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, to figure out from the financial um standpoint, and just from everyone's um opinions and perception of roads as well.
What does that seventy look like?
Yeah, um, so, I mean, those are, those are thoughts, I don't know that I have questions, um.
The one thing about the twenty fifteen study that really we did not anticipate was inflation. We, cause I mean, we've been in decades of inflation of two percent, right, since the late nineties. This inflation is killing us, it's just eaten us up, so we thought our dollars were gonna go a lot farther than they did.
Yeah, I, I mean, one thing that I, you had shared uh with me was just how many miles we've added in the last twenty years, and it's, it's something like two hundred miles, which is forty percent of our miles, I might be stating that wrong.
Thirty to forty percent of, of lane miles since twenty, since two thousand and six, I mean, Seth Child, Miller Parkway, Grandmere Parkway, I mean, none of that was there, so. I was surprised.
I don't know, it's always been there for me, Brian, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, Miller Parkway stopped at the Water Tower in two thousand and six, so it's gone a long way since then, a lot more residential roads too, yet. There was a huge boom in two thousand and six, it really was, the residential and commercial was just huge. And now, it's hard to believe it twenty years later, but those streets are looking like it, they're starting to show their age.
Okay.
Trying to follow your budget there, is it, am I right, it's all made up with the special streets and highway fund and the sales tax?
Correct.
So there's no general fund money?
Correct, yes.
How long is that sales tax?
It goes until December of next year.
No, historically, how far, how far we've been using, just.
It was just this one, right, just this ten year?
Yeah, this was the first one.
So everything else was out of the general fund before then?
Yeah.
Because when you look it up in the sales tax, that's what I hear, we did the sales tax so we could improve our roads. I didn't see any improvement. It looks like all you did was take away the money we're spending and devoted it all to sales tax versus improving our roads with the sales tax. Now you're coming back and want more sales tax money. I'm already hearing that um on it, and that's just the general question, we used to take care of our roads without sales tax. And now we add sales tax, and we took away the money we used to spend, and now we need more sales tax.
So everything in purple has been paid for with sales tax? In this graph here, everything in purple has been paid for with sales tax.
Well, the question I get asked is what happened to the general fund money that used to go to?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great analysis, Commissioner Mata, and I think we can certainly go back and try to get some historic data and see how much we were using um from the general fund prior to uh the passage of the sales tax. I, I think that's certainly a data point we can get, um, as we continue having this analysis conversation about our sales tax strategy um moving forward into next year.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not trying to.
No, no, I.
It's your new job, you gotta take it.
We also have, you know, thirty to forty percent more roads and they cost twice as much.
But there, but the question is you took the legs out from under it, isn't your increased cost that did it, it's you took away the old funding that you used to, used to give.
It's really a combination, but we can get data from like two thousand to two thousand and fifteen on what.
Yeah, I think that's the question we need to answer when we say we wanna take the sales tax out, is they're saying, what happened to that old money?
Any other questions?
Good evening, Commissioners, Gary Holes, thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle, um, I'm gonna ask you this, and you'll probably ask it to him. Lot of, lot of echo. This one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. I, along with many others, travel into Manhattan after work on Scenic Drive on the west side, hopefully you've driven it as well. Approximately fifty feet to the south of Wildcat Creek Bridge on the northbound, or what I call the northbound Scen- Scenic Drive. It's very rough, unless I dozed off, I didn't hear anything about Scenic Drive in that area. Do you know anything about it? That's at the crest of the hill, I was told.
No, it's actually in the city, and it's gonna be part of the on-call.
On-call, okay.
Yeah, cause there's some patches in there, I agree with you, fifty feet south of the bridge.
It's shake.
Also coming down the hill, from Miller Parkway down the hill to the bottom, there's some shoulder ravelling, it's gonna be part of the on-call.
Gary, you need to sign in, please.
Pardon?
Sign in, please.
Oh.
Okay, we have one more thing on the agenda, and that's cemetery issues. Um, should we take a ten minute pause, or?
I'm dead.
Okay. Okay. Second, Manhattan's in a very soon true project.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, um, tonight we're here to kinda go over a work session with the cemetery improvements that were identified in the cemetery master plan. Uh, as we are venturing towards the uh Phase Two GMP of the project. So just a little bit background, January sixteenth, twenty-four, we adopted a master plan. That master plan identified things like creating a joint shop at uh Sunset, creating a, a new office and storage facilities out at Sunrise, repairing roads, new columbariums, uh, and, and I think most people are familiar with the project, so. Uh, one of the most important things in there was ADA compliant access, uh, in particular for serving um, uh, customers that come out to Sunrise uh looking for spaces in our cemeteries. December third, uh, the commission authorized us to develop a design build team of BHS Construction, Olson and Architect One. In January seventh, we began Phase One Designs, and that's what we'll present to you tonight. Um, part of what was included in that is we did host a couple of stakeholder meetings, now we had several stakeholder meetings in the master plan development, so this was really just trying to tidy up some areas. One of those was a public meeting on February seventeenth, and then we had a joint board meeting between the cemetery and the Historical Resources Board on February twenty-fourth. So just a little history, um, our cemeteries have been serving the Manhattan area since eighteen sixty. Um, as we are, and I'll get into this in a little bit, as we are trying to bring on a um online platform and trying to put that data into that platform, it's been rather difficult and arduous because there's a lot of records. Um, the Sexton House was built in the nineteen-ten, the Arch in nineteen-seventeen, and the Paisley Tower in nineteen-thirty-one, and the Stonewalls nineteen-thirty-two in Sunset Cemetery. Sunrise was added the, uh, as a cemetery in nineteen sixty. Uh, in that acquisition, uh, the nineteen-fifties farmhouse that was out there, uh, which is also a, a garage as well behind it, uh, which serves as a maintenance shop out there. Um, in, I wanna say night, Mike may correct me, but twenty seventeen or twenty-eighteen is when we started doing uh cemetery operations out of that house. Um, and it is the current customer center. Our current operations are onsite services with plots and niche sales, scheduling and planning, genealogy, grave location assistance, uh, historical record, records and research, and personal engagement with customers. Our current conditions are not meeting ADA standards. Uh, we have outside storage of equipment, which increases the weather, weathering on them, meaning they need replacement more often. Uh, we do have some foundational instructional issues with at least the existing Sunrise Shop. Uh, there's no private meeting space, if you walk in and you're having a meeting, it's in what looks to be. There's no private meeting space if you walk in and you're having a meeting that's in what looks to be an old living room. And there isn't a space where families can meet with our staff privately. This is mainly in Sunset, roads, stormwater, and roads, stormwater, and water site issues. And uh as we showed and toured, the zoo has several facilities that if we were to execute the joint maintenance facility, we would remove and stop using. And so, tonight, I'm gonna go through kinda what the second round of GMP uh would look like and the costing around that. Uh, but really, we, we need to kinda answer the question, do we wanna continue providing onsite services for the cemetery? And so, if we are, what do we need to do as far as facility upgrades? I equate projects like this kinda like putting a roof on your house. It's not flashy. We gotta put a roof on if we wanna maintain it, and nothing new happens. You already had one, we're replacing it. So, this is a maintenance item, um but if we're gonna continue onsite services, we need to do something. So, just to show kinda what the original kinda scope was uh out of the master plan, this is a document out of there that identified three spaces, a new shop, renovation of the existing shop, and a new office building. And so, what kinda came out of that was uh this structural design that we would make a single space. Because of the structural and foundational issues in the existing shop, uh we would redesign cause it's always more efficient to have one building rather than multiple. And in that space, we could actually downsize about two thousand square feet of building and accomplish what we needed out of the singular building. This would provide ADA access, onsite parking, a conference room that they could meet individually with families and be out of the lobby area, a separate research room. It's also got a hardened area for our staff in case inclement weather comes in, and uh it's the most efficient use of shop area.
What's the research room? Is it just, would that be like?
Records.
Okay.
People that wanna come onsite, and some of that's gonna be digital and some of that's gonna be.
Okay.
Or copy.
Just kind of a private place people can go and.
Yeah. So, just to give you a, a sense, if you can kinda see the existing shop here. Uh, in the original plan, we had this L-shaped shop area and maintenance yard. And then, down here, we had that uh new office building. So, instead, we've reduced that footprint uh down to that singular building. And that's Sunrise. So, Sunset, uh the cemetery, uh zoo joint maintenance facility was included in that. Originally, we had kinda called out columbariums, and this is one of the things we heard from both the public input and the joint meeting was obviously they don't want them around the Paisley Tower, um and I'll go over that in a minute. Major need for infrastructure improvements with the roads, the water line, and we have some pretty severe stormwater runoff in these two areas that need to be addressed. And the memorial arch needs to be repaired. So, just the shop concept, and this one stayed, we had done some additional work on this before we went to phase one. So, this phase stayed pretty much the same, uh so this is just some renderings of that space. And then, a kinda layout site plan of the, the zoo fence line is kinda right here through the middle. So, in identifying a space for the columbarium, the Paisley Tower is up in this area, we pulled that site over here. So, it's kinda right next to the wall, um and we'll kinda get into these two alternates. This is what we're suggesting, an alternate one build-out versus a full build-out of what that entire site would look like. And just some concept drawings of what that would look like. So, here's that kinda center monument that we would surround with the wings going back and then looking back. In the original master plan, it called for road phasing, uh our suggestion is to include all the roads. Including the stormwater improvements in the two corners, as well as the new water lines that run down the main since we're already in there. Need to do uh structural repair and tuck pointing on that arch. Um, and part of what we're examining is uh, a lot of times, I guess, the hearse will scrape on this incline. So, coming back and smoothing that transition out for cars getting in and out. The other thing is using this space over here to get that gate, once we shore up the, the foundation on this and the structural repair, ideally, we can then open these gates and create an ADA accessible path through that area. And then, the flagpole is in a really, I would say, unique and difficult location. And all we're suggesting is we actually move it back to this corner. There are roads right here. You can kinda see it in here, they, they've been blended out. Right now, there's an existing road right here, and part of that entrance would be done and that access would be shut off. Timeline, if we move forward with phase two, um would be kind of completion of design in uh August of uh twenty-five. Construction beginning in September, and then um ideally, construction complete in July of twenty-six. Um, and there, you can kinda see the, the chart they gave us. So, phase one, which we already committed to, hundred and fifty thousand, one seventy for phase one design. Phase two, uh broken down, the Sunset Cemetery is about six point eight million dollars. Sunrise is four point one. If we were to just do those projects listed, the GMP would be ten million, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. That does carry a twenty percent contingency. Part of that is, there's a very unstable environment as far as purchasing goods right now. Ideally, we would come in below that number. We are identifying two alternates. The alternate number one, which is the six hundred and forty niche, that smaller version of the columbariums is at one point three. Alternate two would be a twenty-five hundred niche build-out at two point one. Looking at alternate one, and one of the reasons we're suggesting in investing in this is uh there is a return on investment in that, and right now, Sunset is sold out completely. So, that doesn't mean lots don't come back to us, and sometimes they're resold, but not at a high rate. And there is a high desire to be in that cemetery, so we do believe that this would be a popular item. Uh, a niche cost on average at twenty-five hundred uh per niche. We anticipate annual sales around fifty-seven. Where we kinda came up with that is, we think we could pre-sell about a hundred of them, about seventy-five a year two, and then it would kinda tailor off to about fifty a year after that. Looking at an ROI of approximately nine years based on this model, we would want to do a fifty-fifty split. Right now, there isn't a perpetual care fund at Sunset, and so, our intent would be to create that with half the cost of the sale going to perpetual care. The reason we would suggest alternate one is, over that ten years, we can take that perpetual care fund and invest it and have it uh gain growth, and we would be at about nine hundred thousand dollars to be ready to build out more. Now, part of the initial build-out is what you're seeing over here. These is, this is all ADA accessible. These are actually parking stalls, and so, you're doing all the site work in phase one. So, if we did execute phase two, that cost per niche, which right now is around twenty-one hundred dollars, if you go with alternate one, would significantly drop because all the site work's been done, all the concrete's there. It would then be about installing the, the niches right here. So, our recommendation as staff uh as a phase two uh would be the uh ten point nine on the cemetery improvements, but we would also recommend the alternate one, which is another one point three. Bringing the GMP agreement to twelve point three. And then, the other expenses, uh change orders, inspections, design, et cetera, we're estimating at one million uh for total project cost of thirteen point three. If we were to fi- finance this, we would anticipate uh geo-bond issuance in uh May of twenty-eight with an annual payment of two million dollars on uh ten-year bond and uh one point two on twenty years. Also recognize that's a big price tag. So, splitting these out, and this is our recommendation of priority, the Sunrise shop and office is four point four. Sunset joint maintenance would be two point six, the columbarium at one point three, the site at four point one, and the Sunset entry at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Aaron, the Sunset site, that's the water.
That's water.
Stormwater, roads.
All the infrastructure work that's in there, yeah.
I would've thought that would be a higher priority.
That's what I thought too.
So, some of that, uh, I think there are certain things that we can do in-house over time that are minimal. It would take us longer, a lot longer. Um, in particular, it'd be some temporary fixes and things like that. Uh, but we would try to work that back in, uh potentially with uh uh alternate money from another location. It wouldn't be that we would just ignore it. Essentially, if you can start to engage a perpetual care fund in a location, um it, it can help offset that. Now, the money you would spend immediately would not be available for columbariums in the future, but that may be a trade-off to where it's earning money and paying down some of that project.
I, I think we should really consider the, the roadways at Sunset. I drove through there. And um they need a couple loads of gravel and the asphalt definitely needs, needs some help. Um, and put it into the CIP for next year, because I don't think that the Sunset roads can wait um to be the fifth priority.
So, some considerations, um I think kinda the first thing we need to figure out is if we wanna continue onsite services. If so, implement some phase of a GMP and um I, we would need some sort of office and maintenance building. Now, if that's just Sunrise, that's understandable. We would, you could select from the different phases, and I give some examples. So, if you selected, say, the Sunrise office and shop, and the joint maintenance facility and the columbarium, that would be a total of eight point four. Sunrise office and shop and the site improvements that you're talking about, the roadways, would be at eight point five. If you did the Sunrise shop, office and shop only, that would be that four point four. So, if we're proceeding with that, my suggestion is that we need a new facility for staff to operate out of. We're at the point of no return. If we're choosing not to do that, and we're gonna remove personal services from the cemetery, then the new platform ideally can handle online sales. It could work with funeral directors. Um, it will do some location, it will do location services and digital records research. But it wouldn't necessarily mean that we can't do any work out there. We would need to do an installation of self-help, self-help kiosks at both cemeteries. We would move sales and services either to City Hall or the rec centers or both, some sort of customer service center. Um, obviously, we would continue to perform maintenance. We would have to acquire uh new trailers and some of those things to make that a little more efficient. And we are recommending that, that the Sunrise house and shop would be demolished, returned to the natural landscaping, and we would probably plot them for burials. And it could include the construction of the Sunset Zoo G M F or not. So, if we're using the yacht joint facility, it's obviously a lot longer to travel versus if we were at Sunset. So, really, the, the decision comes back down to, do we wanna continue to have personal service out onsite at the cemeteries, or are we gonna move those services kind of into City Hall and the rec centers?
What kind of, like, traffic volume are we getting out there going, you know, to onsite services? I am assuming by onsite, you're meeting the meetings.
Yep.
There, not, not burial services.
Showing, showing locations, like, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a part of our service at that point. It would be very transactional if we weren't to do that, meaning we're gonna sell the plot, and that's kind of where we at. We open and close a grave or a niche, and it, it becomes very transactional. Versus, right now, we're meeting with people, we're showing them the sites, giving them options, helping them through that. Helping them through the, the process of what it takes to, to get somebody buried or put in a columbarium.
How, I mean, go ahead. Aaron, do we have any statistics on how many people we have coming through the door during the week? Thank you.
Mike? Generally, we're doing three burials a week, right?
Right, and we're, we're averaging about forty people.
Forty people a week.
Forty people a week?
Yeah, forty.
And three burials a week?
So, remember, they're not always there just to see, uh just to acquire a space for a burial or, or columbarium. Some of them are there to visit and try and locate graves, some of them are.
Yeah, tha- that's just a much larger number than what I, I thought it was.
He said it's thirty to.
Mike, please, Mike, please come up to the podium, thank you. Yeah, on average, and, and I know that, that's, I'm, I'm putting you on the spot with a.
Not, not every week I get forty people, but.
Yeah.
Some weeks I get sixty.
Okay, wow.
We, we get a lot of business at the cemeteries. Uh, we, when we sell lots, we, we average about three to three lots a week.
So, yeah, so there, the, the things that people are coming to the cemetery for are.
Our flower, our decoration lot, where, where mom and dad are at. I mean, the cemetery changes every, every month.
So, it's everything.
Things get bigger, I mean, more stones go in, more areas are open. Sunrise has doubled in size in, in, in thirty years.
Sure, and it is, even Sunset is very complicated.
It's very complicated.
But there are kiosks and things up there into other cemeteries, or you can just, you know, map them.
But, well, Sunset, there's really not. I mean, they, they actually have to. There, there's, there's a mapping system that's, at this point, inadequate, but.
So, so, on the, the new system, the new system would allow for a better mapping system that you could get through through the app on your phone.
Yes.
So, ideally, it will help locate that with much better accuracy.
Just trying to understand, if you go to non-onsite services, I mean, they're still, in the end, gonna have a burial, correct? They're still gonna have to get there, they're still gonna have to know what to do. Is this all just kind of a virtual thing, or they go out and take a look by themselves, or how does that work?
Yeah, so, it would, again, some of this could fall to the funeral home and what they're willing to do. But ideal, if we're doing it in this more transactional model, it is, we're not necessarily showing them the site other than you can pick these locations that we're showing them on a screen.
But they could go out, out there on their own and take a look?
They could.
Like you said, the funeral directors.
We could.
Might have to get more involved, that may be part of their marketing.
Potentially.
Yep.
Um, and what, we would obviously be opening and closing graves and niches based on that. But we could, it would be, we would not be in person, so if they're trying to find a loved one or whatever, it would be on that digital platform.
Yeah, that I understand a little more than the actual.
So, finding a grave site would be very similar.
So, Aaron, is it one or the, like, if we keep onsite, are we not looking at the platform then? Because that's a redundant, we're.
Platform is underway and we are moving that.
Okay.
So, I mean, my two cents on this, at there, at some point, this is gonna be, just like our registrations for Parkson Recreation, it's gonna primarily fall online. The clientele that we're currently serving, I don't know that is there yet. Will it be ten years? Will it be twenty? I do think eventually, the way this changes. And when you talk about kinda the future of cemeteries, even the way we are burying each other is, is changing. And I joked with Mike when I first got here, out in Washington and Oregon, you can turn yourself into mulch. It takes about eight weeks. And they have, in Washington in particular, they have a memorial forest, and so, you go plant a tree, and it's out on a mountainside. And so, this is changing, right? This is a new thing that's out there. Europe's been doing it for a while. For a while, it was, you were putting a, a casket and you were burying, and then cremation started to come in. And so, things are evolving, even in this world, just like how we consume and how we purchase things evolve. So, I do think eventually, we're there. I'm just not sure the clientele that we serve, given that their time in life and their ability to work with technology, is quite at the point of where we don't wanna have personal service yet. But that's, that's my.
Did the um kinda feedback sessions or the cemetery and historic resource board or, or those other sessions you had provide any feedback on that? And I'm seeing that there's probably people in the crowd that will.
There are people that will probably speak to that.
Yeah.
I think this is a more um recent thought of, you know. I think this is a more recent thought of, you know, as we progress.
I meant speaking to the customer service side of what's being provided out there and the importance of that, I guess, just to...
Yeah, I don't think we were actually talking about that.
Okay.
We had completed a master plan and we were looking at design. And so I think those stakeholder meetings were centered around the design. And in particular, columbariums were the big issue, if you remember, as we were adopting the master plan and as we were moving into phase one. And so there's a lot of focus on, on Sunset and the historical nature of that and making sure that those columbariums fit in well.
But I don't know that we need all the, all the cement around the columbariums. I mean, you, it looks like something out of Arlington National Cemetery. I, I mean, I, I'm just puzzled by the number, the dollars that this is, you're asking us to even consider. The budget hasn't even started this year and there simply isn't thirteen million dollars around. It went up from ten million a couple of months ago. You know, I think that there's a lot of things we could be doing to be more proactive. It took about ten years to get green burials at Sunrise. I mean, we kept asking and asking and somehow it finally turned out that we can do it there and it's quite efficient. You know, I would like to see, I, you know, I think, I don't know that we need to deliver this in the Hilton. I think, you know, I took my husband's ashes to Abilene. I met with the people there in kind of a ponset hut. They were very, very nice, they were very, very kind. They took me to the place, they'd already, that's where John's family was, they'd made, you know, dug the hole and that kind of thing. I didn't need a twenty-four hundred, twenty-four, two point four million dollar building to take care of his ashes and to help me out. I mean, we just heard from the road people, we, I mean, Aaron, it's just too expensive. We've got to find some ways to do it and, and get the roads fixed so people can drive around. And, you know, columbariums, the Episcopal Church has a columbarium inside the church. It's probably got fifty spots, didn't cost, I mean, I realize this is outside and, but, you know, it just costs tens of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars.
Aaron, I mean, I just have a couple questions. I think last time we talked, there's quite a process to go through to re, and I, this is a little bit off from the, the project, but just overall on the cemeteries, with fees for burials, plots, I felt like it was a process to change those fees.
We'll need to do a...
But, well...
Resolution or ordinance, one of the two, in order to update those. And I, if I'm wrong, is that state statute that requires that or something?
No, we have an ordinance though that does set some of the fees with a resolution to set some of them. But the main fees are set by ordinance.
Is that something that we're considering, looking at as a part of?
Yes.
I'm going to say cost recovery and that might sound callous because it's burials, but...
I think we, we certainly do need to look at fees and that, you know, we, that obviously wasn't a part of this.
Right, I'm just, yeah.
Right now, we're subsidizing a burial by about three hundred dollars every time we do it. So at a minimum, we should probably be breaking even on that. But it would give us an opportunity, if we're going to look at both the ordinance and that, to reestablish perpetual care funds, things like that, in a fee change. So dedicate funding to the future preservation of those facilities.
And, and I know previously we talked about going back through on, like reclaiming unused.
Yes.
I'm like, I'm not trying to grill you on that one, but I, I know that's a challenging process, but I guess in just...
It's about a three-year process to reclaim a grave.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yes, do I think, there's a lot that goes into that.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I think eventually we probably need to find a policy. Now, I will say Manhattan is in a much different scenario because of Sunrise. We actually have quite a bit of space for the next couple hundred years.
Right.
And most places are kind of landlocked and don't find themselves in that. And that's where reclaiming lots starts to come in, you know.
So it just hasn't been a priority since we have the, the Sunrise?
I mean, it's not as high of a priority. I think, you know, obviously, we want to manage and maintain space in the most efficient manner. So it's probably something worthy of a discussion, even if we're setting a policy that we're not. So it's theirs, we're selling, rather than...
Like a going-forward policy, yeah, yeah.
To do that, then we've got to start the whole process.
Yeah, I think that's a smart idea. My final question is on the other operations that, i- if we move them away from Sunrise, do we have, and I know you included on the slide, what it would cost to acquire new trailers at the Otto joint maintenance facility?
No, we would, we would, so because this is kind of a recent kind of conversation point out of this, we would need to do a transition plan if the commission chose not to do personnel.
That would, that would include operation costs and...
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to, I mean, we'll have to trailer everything in. So, you know, we actually lost two trailers last year due to some accidents that I think we maybe replaced one. Because they're never, you never get enough insurance money to replace the full value. So, I, we would have to study that based on loading and unloading and, you know, whether we're all working in one cemetery or we're going to work in both and how many units that is and what it can carry.
Yeah, that's really kind of what I was going to ask is like, you know, not just the, the financial cost of buying the equipment, but the, the personnel impact and...
You're going to lose at least an hour a day of staff productivity just by loading and unloading and trailer, at least.
Aaron, how many, what's the FTE in that department?
I think we're down to three, and then Mike, so four total in that division.
Okay, and what's the budget for the, the cemetery department?
You know, I don't have that one off the top of my head.
Good.
And it's, it's, it's not necessarily split out that directly in the parks budget, it's under the parks budget.
But we, so we can't see income out, income in?
Actually, right now, they're not recording any of the income into the rec side of the house. It's all going into general services, I believe. So we see how much we have, but it's not in a cost-recovery model.
Aaron, I said I, I didn't have any more questions, but I lied, sorry. And this is one that was posed to, to me via email. Did we consider any other locations for the Sunrise shop and office?
Yes.
Can you...
The reason is, we actually talked about moving it to the back of the cemetery and the utility costs and that would dramatically increase the project cost, even above where we're at right now for the four point four. And one of the reasons to, to move that to a single facility was to help create some savings there.
If you had to pick one shop site...
Number one.
Yeah?
That's the, like, in the, those are our priorities in recommend, our recommended priorities to you. If we're going to perform onsite services.
And that, and that is considering not just the cemetery operations, but the zoo as well? That would, would benefit, because the zoo's going to need some...
There, there's, there's a reason those are the top two.
Yeah.
Is our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is really outdated and failing. So, as, as it was pointed out, there's structural issues with the shop that's out there right now. So, out at Sunrise. The zoo, you've seen there, everything we're looking to tear down, which is, some of it, I'm surprised that it's still standing, so...
Yeah, does that, does that stuff at the zoo, does that put our AZA accreditation?
No, because we're, we're doing our best to maintain that and it doesn't, it doesn't, with AZA in particular, it does not impact animal care as much. It's not that they don't look at it, but they also recognize that if any investments need to go to the animal enclosures and animal care. So, you know, the, the maintenance kind of, unfortunately, the maintenance gets looked at last, the maintenance shop. And I will give staff kudos of credit, the buildings are, are really rough, but they keep them clean, they keep them organized. And so that's the kind of thing that AZA is looking at.
Once again, another question, sorry. The, the Sunset, it's my last one, I'll, I can have a lot of last ones, I think.
You promised.
Um, oh, I, I lied last time too, Karen, sorry. Sunset Zoo. And I know we haven't got to repayment of, if we move forward through this, but I know Sunset Zoo has their, what, what do we call it, Friends of, their Special Sunset Zoo. Would any, no?
Not be the capacity for that.
Or repayment of bond through that?
We actually shifted fund, we actually shifted things around into that fund last year in order to make up ground on the general fund, instead of making those kind of cuts that would, would put some of our animal care at risk. So, we have less staff, I should say.
I was really wanting to be like, yeah, we'll pay it off through this special zoo.
It's really hard to fundraise a maintenance shop, too.
Very much so. Coming here and ask for this, so...
Um, I have a question, Danielle, do you know, will we have, what kind of bonds we'll have being paid off in the near future?
I might ask Jason to help me jump in on this one, but I do believe we have about thirty million that's going to be paid off this year. So we would have the capacity to bring these on.
But we would still need X number of dollars per year. And we just, we just bonded forty-one million a couple of weeks ago.
I am tracking and would rely on those previous folks who were here when all of these previous conversations were had, but we are anticipating paying off that thirty million dollars. And yes, I know we did just add some additional, but we would have capacity to do this project and keep our bond payment the same annually.
The, the bonds themselves have a variety of different revenue streams coming in to support them.
Yeah, some of them are spe, some of them are specials, there's no question about that.
Sure.
But our total bond indebtedness is what?
Right around three hundred million.
Yeah, three hundred million dollars.
Yeah, and, and most of our debt is structured on a ten-year note. With the exception of the specials, the specials are out there on twenty-year, but those are all paid by those homeowners on an annual basis. So when you, you get back into the debt and how it's structured, that's really internally how we've approached projects like this. It kind of gets back in even to your street comment earlier, Commissioner Mata. Bond and interest is where we used to pay for all our street projects in our community. It wasn't cash. That general fund two million is still the same two million we're using to pay our people and for their equipment in the operating fund. But from a debt perspective, it is, I mean, we took three mils out of the bond and interest last year. It's down to point seven. So you have a lot of sales tax and you have a lot of other revenue streams. Joint maintenance facility, we just issued debt on it, over twenty million dollars for that facility. There's no way we're building that facility for twenty million dollars today.
That's right.
All these things just get more expensive. I just get back to where Aaron's comment was. We're either philosophically going to provide service at the cemeteries like we've done for the past hundred and some odd years or we're transitioning to something else.
I, I just think that we might be able to build a very nice place for people to go at Sunrise Cemetery for under a million dollars. I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money. I'm sorry, but four and a half million dollars is simply too much.
Well, I think to build what we have here that's being presented is going to take this much money.
Yeah.
But I agree with Karen from the standpoint that I don't think we can afford it. Even if that money's coming, coming off, so we have the, we can afford to put on more debt and even if the payment's going to stay the same, I mean, we haven't done it on our budget yet, but it wouldn't be nice to have that million or two million dollars more for general operating from year to year versus putting it back on the payment scheduled to do? I mean, I think we have to look at not doing the onsite services. And, I mean, we got to, we have to make some decisions eventually where we save some money somewhere. I mean, we can't just keep going the way that we're going for, with this. You know, I don't like it, but I don't really see a lot of choices. I'd rather have this discussion after we did the budget.
Yeah, I agree.
But I have kind of idea how that discussion's going to go on the budget. You know, I'd really like that joint maintenance facility with the zoo, because I think that takes a couple, takes care of a couple of problems in there. But everything else, I think we, we need to, we need to look away to save some money.
Aaron, what do you think it would look like just to have the office facility at Sunrise and not the shop?
I mean, so you're, you're trading, I mean, kind of like you're talking about on streets, you're trading our ability to store equipment and manage equipment inside a facility, and particularly the backhoe, which is a really expensive piece of equipment that is weathering really quickly because it's stored outside. You will continue to see that. Anything stored in a yard is less secure than anything stored in a building, so...
But what about, like, if we moved it to, to the Otto? What would, I mean, I, I know we, we...
We, we would not have enough, we would not have in-store, inside storage at the Otto.
Okay.
I just, you know...
It would be outside, it'd be in a yard.
AT, Atta Bus just added quite a, quite a significant thing to their bus, you know, area, covered area, and to their office space for under a million dollars. I mean, I, I could build you a house at Grand Mary for...
I, I mean, I would be curious, I think to John's point about having to save money somewhere, I would say all of your expertise in, in the room from everyone in the city, we're frequently making customer service decisions versus spend. I, I am really curious to hear feedback on the customer service component of it and what people are expecting. So if, if people are coming up to speak, it would be nice to know what people think about onsite services versus not. Because this is a, a customer service decision and, and how much is it, you know, is it worth four point five million dollars? That is a large number. As a whole, I, I do like the concept that was presented, but I, I, I want to know what people think from a customer service standpoint, and, and that's for any, anyone who's wanting to give feedback.
Shall we go ahead with customer, with public comment then, or are there...
Other questions? Does anybody want to make a comment?
Oh, yes, I do. Eric Lundeen, I'm going to kind of speak on two different hats here. Funeral director in Manhattan for forty years, so I've been on that side with families. Been on the cemetery board for twenty-five years of that, so I understand that. So it's always for me, you know, I want to do what's right for the city and not what's right for, but it has to be fair for both.
Could you give us your address, please?
Seventeen oh five Kingwood Drive.
Thank you.
Why didn't you ask the others for their address? I'll just, I'll just move forward. I, I will say I want to speak on probably three different areas. One is the shops that the staff has had to work in. The Sunset shop has been on and off the CIP to fix that, to have a place that is a decent work environment compared to what is there currently that they've worked in since I went on the cemetery board in nineteen ninety-four that is hideous. I mean, you need to go look at the Sunset shop that those guys have worked in. And it is hideous. I mean, there's guys in there that have to lower their head just so they can get to the other side of the building. It's bad. The shop at Sunrise is inadequate. It doesn't handle all of the equipment and everything else. They, and then the house is a nineteen fifties house that hasn't been remodeled, hasn't been renovated. You know, Manhattan always wants to put on the face of that we are a very welcoming, very nice, very well-kept city. And then when a family member has somebody die, we take them into a house that they can't get into or Mike has to meet them down there. It's just, it just doesn't represent the city very well. And that's an area where we have a lot of people from outside of the community come into. So I understand your point, Karen, about that you just need to go into a five-by-five room and it's fine. There needs to be an area that's represented. There needs to be an area that's representative, nice. It doesn't have to be elaborate. I completely agree with that. I think the other thing that I think is maybe more of a little surprise to me tonight, because it was never talked to at us on the cemetery board or in the joint meeting with the Historic Resources Board, about the online selling comparatively to onsite selling.
Can we give him some more time?
Sure, sure. Eric, as, as you're really giving us the report from the cemetery board, would you go ahead?
Okay. Oh, did I run out of time?
Yeah, but that's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna give you a little more-
Okay, thank you. Um, that is, I think there's two things that are being asked there. One is, we are being told as funeral directors that we're going to have to do more to support the families because the city's not going to support the families by making it all online. I think you had a very good point that there's a lot of people that come in that they are completely lost. To try to make them have to go to a computer, look at a cemetery, try to pick out a space. They don't have any visualization of where it is, you know. I can tell people where to go and you get into a cemetery and like Mike said, it changes. There's new monuments here and there, and they're, and they're lost. You know, when we do a cemetery consultation, we'll set up a time with Mike. They'll go and they can look and they can see and say, oh yeah, I know Mrs. Smith. You know, they were former neighbors of ours. We'd like to be by here. Or Mike can tell them, well, okay, in this area, the stone faces to the north because in sections J, A, A, C, and D, isn't that right, Mike? They all, they're all back-to-back. Or B's not, but D, yeah. But, but they're, J, A, and C are all back-to-back. So a family goes, oh yeah, I'd like this spot, you know, it's right off the road, it looks really nice. And then they get up there and they say, wait a minute. It doesn't say, you know, what the stone has to face to the back of the cemetery. It faces, you know, I figured all of them, like all cemeteries I've ever been to, they're like, everyone faces, it's on the head and it faces to the east. Well, Sunrise Cemetery is unique in that situation. I see that there's going to be a lot of problems coming to you, the cemetery, everybody else, if you do it all online. Because a lot of those answers aren't, it can never be explained online. And I think that, you know, if we, if our society goes away from people talking to each other, people working with each, with, with each other to do everything, I think that we are going backwards. Specifically in funeral service, because it is such an intimate time in a person's life that if you don't do it right once, you're wrong forever. And I think that looking at a cemetery in, in that way, you know, you have one chance to do it right. There's a lot of other opportunities in life. We can go back and, okay, I can make this right. You can, but then, once it's wrong, once it's wrong forever. Yes. Okay.
Eric, can I ask you a quick question? Because you're in this industry, is the need for columbariums, I'm not saying that word correctly?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, good. Uh, growing the need for, for those, growing, what is the trend?
That was the third thing I wanted to talk about. So, maybe I get three times.
Yeah, I guess it's your three.
Thank you. Um, I will say that there's been conversations about columbariums, and there was conversation about them at Sunset Cemetery. And I would say that I have fifty people in my back pocket that the minute they're, they're, they're sold. And that's a very, very, very low number. Um, for example, at the Kansas Veterans Cemetery, they put in three huge columbariums. Those are be, those will be the first thing that they need to add. You know, when I got into the business, cremation was about five percent, and that's nineteen eighty-six. I dated myself, I'm sorry. Now it's probably more like sixty to sixty-five percent. It's taken a long time for what was on the coast to work here. And it's going to take, and you know, that trend's going to continue, but it's, it's, it's a long trend. You know, cremation in Oregon, you know, twenty-five years ago was eighty percent. Well, you know, at that point in time, we were twenty-five percent. It, it, it'll be different, but yes, I fo- I fully see that if we do, what was, what was the number of columbariums?
Six hundred and forty.
Six hundred and forty. They will be sold prior to the ten years. People love Sunset Cemetery. That's their heritage. That's where they have to have other families. That's where they would like to have.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Any other questions? I will do, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, as a point of order, uh, staff recommends that you give everyone else the opportunity to speak for six minutes this evening.
He did respond to a question from, from Commissioner. Okay, um, other comments from the public?
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Uh, Mick Charney, fourteen twenty Waterford. Um, I'm a member of the Historic Resources Board, but I don't presume to speak for the whole board, just myself, my observations. And I'd like to direct your attention specifically to Sunset Cemetery and specifically to the matter of the columbarium there. Uh, first, I have several points to make. First of all, thank you all very much for arranging a joint meeting between the HRB and the cemetery board. Point number two, the two boards did meet on February twenty-fourth. Point number three, I felt personally that the meeting went very well, that it was collegial and collaborative and constructive. And I came out of the meeting very positive about the situation. And I think that we found common ground, the two boards, with respect to the columbarium, but most especially with respect to the historic nature of Sunset Cemetery. And that's what the main, um, the main issue is with the Historic Resources Board. As I mentioned in previous addresses to you, uh, that board is of real genuine historic part, uh, importance, and it needs to be nominated to both the state and the, uh, national registers. Point number four, um, in terms of the design for the columbarium as presented in the presentation, um, in many ways I found it to be inspired, uh, because it's moved away from Paisley Tower, which is what we asked for, and because it takes a niche of the cemetery that's kind of a no man's land, so to speak, right now, and makes it more important. And it takes, takes cues from the design of the rest of the cemetery. For example, that hexagonal monument, central monument that sits at the hinge of that wedge shape. It kind of echoes and speaks in a dialogue with Paisley Tower, and you can actually see the two from each other. You can get glimpses of them. So it's connecting one part of the cemetery to another. Um, and I like the idea of a phased expansion of the columbarium outward from that starting point of that acute corner. Point number five, and yet, if I were critiquing this design in a design studio at K-State, I would need more information and more detail in order to make time to a final assessment about the design. For example, I would love to see a section through the site because it is sloped. I would love to see aerial perspectives of how it fits into the rest of the cemetery, what's right around it, how it would coordinate and harmonize with them. I would love to see a landscaping plan because as Mayor McCullough said, um, I can't imagine with all the hardness in that courtyard space right now that it would be comfortable on a blazing hot summer day. And so, uh, perhaps a landscaping plan that has trees and creates a sort of shaded bower would be a nice addition. Uh, point number six, every design, um, is essentially a problem-solving exercise when you're coming up with a design. And because we're dealing with the cemetery here, I regard it to be not so much an architectural solution that we need. Of course, there have to be the columbarium there, but it should be treated more as a landscape design solution. Um, and point number seven, if you haven't been to that site, and I hope you have, but if you haven't been to that site for the columbarium, I would encourage you to go out there, next couple of days, it's going to be nice weather, and walk the site yourself so you can get some idea of the lay of the land, so to speak. And if you want me to accompany you, I'd be happy to do that. Just give me a call or email me and, uh, be happy to do so. And then point number eight, the ultimate goal of the Historic Resources Board is to begin the writing of a nomination form. And if we're all agreed that, um, the columbarium, if they go anywhere in Sunset Cemetery, should be in that corner, which I think is a really appropriate spot for them, um, then perhaps the board can go ahead with beginning the process for writing the nomination form. And at some point in the future, I don't know if it'll be next week or the next month, but when you do make a decision about the improvements at Sunset Cemetery especially, that maybe there's a phrase in there that directs the Historic Resources Board to begin looking at the issue of drafting a nomination form for the cemetery. So thank you very much for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Make sure you sign in.
Okay.
Other comments from the public?
Don't sound too excited. Amber Starling, four zero eight Houston Street. Lay of the land, these were questions that I had that were not answered in the presentation. Um, I wonder how many lots are left total and that total projected revenue in sales? Uh, how much revenue the cemetery's produce annually versus how much expenditures annually? Uh, how much they expect the columbarium in total to produce in sales versus in interests? Um, one of the things that I, I mean, as a business owner, it's very simple. You increase revenue and decrease costs, period. Um, so I, I do understand how a perpetual care fund works. Part of that fee goes into basically a trust fund, uh, interest from that trust fund accrue, accrues each year, and then you just harvest it for those maintenance costs. Um, I find that to be a very intelligent way of producing additional funding. Um, I wonder how we can maximize it. Um, with the columbarium, it occurs to me that we could increase density, um, for those, uh, places where we can actually put people. Um, and then, uh, reduce the non-income producing infrastructure around it, all of that concrete. Um, we, do we have, can we add perpetual care, uh, packaging to unsold Sunrise lots? Uh, can we add a perpetual care package, like upgrade to lots that have already been sold? Um, and then how we can decrease costs to the city? Um, unfortunately, it does seem rather necessary at this time to cut the onsite office, uh, centralize it to any building that the city already owns and pays the infrastructure on. Um, replace onsite with a, a very well-done and large map, um, including software, kind of just changing with the times. I don't want to do that, uh, but we do need to meet the needs of the living before we address the wants of the dead. Could large swaths of unsold lots in Sunrise be maintained less frequently? Um, can preservation funds or grants be used for archway restoration as opposed to just coming out of the general fund? Uh, are there grants available? Um, and then if we were to cut the onsite office, could we use perhaps a steel-sided building for equipment storage, which would give us a lot more height and width, uh, at a lower cost? Thank you.
Can you sign in, please? Other comments from the audience?
Uh, good evening. Garrick Baker, two oh nine Cop Drive, also Chair of the Historic Resources Board. Um, as part of our discussion around all of this, we were really pushing for recognizing this on the register and everything for that historic aspect of things. It's kind of twofold. One, we also remember it, but also you have those tax credits. So whenever you have those tax credits going to things like fixing up the arch, uh, the state just increased that to forty percent now. So if you think, if you bonded out, I think it was three hundred and sixty thousand just for the arch there, you would be getting a hundred and forty thousand dollars back to go ahead and put in that perpetual care fund. So just, I know folks are a little hesitant about putting this on the register. There's benefit to it, and it can happen at the same time. So there's ways of kind of helping those funds. And not only that, maintenance going into the future will remain tax credit available there. There's also the Heritage Trust Fund grant, so you can be awarded up to ninety thousand. So there are some funds and mechanisms out there with that listing of the Historic Resources Board, uh, or on the register. Um, this is just going to be my personal thought here. Um, growing up, I can remember being ten years old, um, my grandfather and great uncle passed away. I don't even think twenty-four hours apart. We had two funerals on one day, and my dad had planned both of those. I don't think he would have appreciated going up to a kiosk and pushing buttons on that awful day. So I would say that customer service aspect needs to stay there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Sign in? Other comments? See none? Oh. Got to get up there, Donna.
Donna Shane Hamlin, again, nineteen twenty-two, Lowenworth. I live on the street that, uh, whose dead end opens out on the opposite to Sunset Cemetery. I've served on the cemetery board. Uh, it's been a great pleasure to work with Mike, uh, both on that board, the excellent job that he has done for me and for others who are looking for a spot in Sunset Cemetery. But very importantly, that has become a pedestrian walkway. I, I agree with Karen that high priority in terms of phasing the work needs to go to the repair of those gravel roads. I see people of different walking abilities and, uh, and ages trying to navigate the terrible erosion that's happening with the gravel walks. And so, yes, let's work quickly on that. I also believe that we could take advantage if we got this registered in the National Historical Register to get those tax credits and get that arch repaired. We don't have too many opportunities to do that here as one. Uh, but very importantly, those people in my neighborhood, uh, have a pride of place of belonging to this larger Sunset Park. Uh, the, the circle, the water tower, the Sexton House, these are, are real treasures of Manhattan that need to be preserved. And we're, we're waiting in anticipation for moves by the city that show their support for keeping at least the historical structures together and, and very sound.
Donna, sign in, Donna. Oh, you've already did. Okay. Anybody, thank you. Any other takers? Okay, um, direction to staff?
Um, I just, I lean towards keeping onsite service. I think if there's one place that we really should have great customer service, it is in this time. Dying is the one thing that everybody does to get, you know, that, that, we're not, nobody's going to escape it. And I believe that we should, as long as we are owning and maintaining these and operating these cemeteries, we should do our best to, to provide that good customer service. And as far as, you know, th- this, this new facility at, at Sunrise, you know, it's, it's not just about operations. We talk about the historic nature of, of Sunset Cemetery because it is very old. But in fifty or a hundred years, Sunrise Cemetery is going to be very old and historic as well. And if we make these investments into that place, um, now, then in fifty years, the residents of Manhattan will be able, hopefully, to, to appreciate that history that we were able to, to build and maintain. So, yeah, I, I, it is expensive, and, and I think that's not for nothing. But when you, yeah, to me, I just, I, 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 I struggle to, to have a good enough argument to prioritize away any of these, of these projects. And it's, I, I know it is kind of the Cadillac, uh, option. It's just, I, I struggle to, to make that cut of what is acceptable to not do. And, and I mean, the, the buildings are, are not going to stay around forever. We're going to have to do some, we can't not do anything. So, um, I don't know, I, I'm leaning towards keeping onsite service. And it, it really logistically makes sense to have that equipment onsite as well.
Well, it's always going to come down to this. There's always going to be a good reason to spend the money. And at some point, you have to be able to say, we don't have the money to spend and come up with another alternative. I can't see going forward with this project considering our budgets. We didn't give staff salary increases last year. What's that going to be this year? We took out $2 million from debt service last year. We're talking about putting on debt service. I, the alternative that was brought up to not do the onsite services seems like the way we have to go, not because we want to, but I don't see where there's, you're ever going to find a number to take out. There's always that reason that you have to spend it because there'll be another crowd here on another one of these and it'll be the same thing. Can't see how we can do without. I agree with Karen. I don't see how we can just keep on, you know, checking off on these. I think we need another alternative.
John, was that specific to Sunrise Shop? Because did you say, what were your thoughts on Sunset joint maintenance? Sorry.
I'd really like to do that. As you know, I have quite the affection for the zoo and stuff, but I don't know. Just because I like it doesn't mean that we have to spend it. I'd like to see what alternatives we could do. Yeah, I'd like to do that. When you talk about the backhoe and a big piece of equipment, I think it's dumb to keep a big piece of equipment out just with weather. I'd like to see some sort of structure that we could at least put it in that would protect it from the elements. You know, may not do much more than that, but something. You don't just leave it out there to rust. I mean, that's not that joint facility, but I wanted to bring that up.
We just don't have the dollars. I mean, I'm frustrated. I think one thing we should do is definitely tread water on this. I mean, I think it is important to have someone there at the cemetery to guide people. But let's kind of see where we are in August, you know, what kind of dollars we're talking about. You know, I hate to keep ranting on about the bond and interest, but should we see a lot of soldiers leave next year and people having to live on post because that's what Corvus's contract says, that they're going to keep 6,000 apartments full over there? And that could, you know, if we see K-State really seeing NSF money and other things go away?
And the Democratic cliff in attendance.
Yeah, right. The demographic, I just think this is not the time to be spending $4.5 million. I, you know, if you could come back to us with, I hate to say, a Butler Building with a nice lobby, I would probably find the dollars.
Commissioner Mitten, did you have, sorry?
Yeah, I have lots of them. We'll see if I can get them all. Honestly, the columbarium idea, I like that. I, from the revenue generation side, from those sort of, from looking at that idea, I, like I said earlier, I like the concept of the Sunrise Shop. It is, it's very pricey. And I have to go with, I think John and Karen, one of them said, this would maybe be an easier discussion after we've seen the budget. But Erin, when is, usually with a GMP like that, the offer expires at a certain point? Do we have a firm deadline? As I'm looking at Kelly Carl back there. I mean, and that's just, if we don't, I mean, if we're not...
I don't have that with me tonight.
I really thought that the roads would be higher up on the priority list. The Sunset Joint Maintenance Facility price tag is not, that's not as big as what I actually thought it might come back at. And I guess I was expecting Sunrise Shop to be a little bit more in line with that.
So what I'm hearing from Commissioners is that, one, we definitely want to take a break, take a minute on this and we can certainly get back to you with the GMP expiration and we can talk to our folks at BHS and have a good conversation with them and possibly bring this conversation back to you all in September after we have those budget conversations. The one question that I would like a little bit of direction on from you all, understanding that this, the $10 million, the $10.9 million might be a little too more than what we are willing to invest in our cemetery right now. But is there a number that you all would be comfortable with that we could maybe start working towards in the meantime, between now and September, after we figure out kind of where we're at with budget? The one number that I keep hearing you all say is four and a half feels about right. Just with the, kind of looking at what the roads are and then possibly looking at that Sunset Joint Maintenance Facility and maybe if we could pare down the Sunrise Shop, but keep the office as well.
I mean, I think that that's a fair amount. If we could, in my mind, I would like to see what $7 million gets us. But, and that's a little higher because I'm including an alternate for the columbariums in there. Not saying that, yes, I'm going to absolutely support $7 million, but like, I haven't, you know, I'd like to see what those concepts are. I do think one thing we've all stated up here is we've struggled a little bit with the phasing of these and ordering of these and I think we were surprised by that. So I don't know if there's more work to be done on that and relooking at things and that might change some items for us.
Appreciate that feedback.
I do think we need to do something about the roads ASAP. They're really in bad shape. And even the gravel ones, it's, you know, really kind of scary. Having the broad, a lot of people in Europe walk through cemeteries and I think that's becoming a little more popular here. It's not because of, you know, ghosts and ghouls or anything. It's just that it's a very lovely, quiet place to walk and you see people. I saw people the other day when I was driving through Sunset jogging and walking and I think it's fine, but those roads are just dangerous. I mean, you know, it's hard to even go 2 miles an hour on some of them. And of course, one is closed and that's not good either. So if we can somehow move that to the top of the patch list or something, we should have called.
Five's still a bit rich for me. Might be able to get there, not going to seven. The, but in the roads, I've been thinking, is there something we can do just to get them in better shape versus a whole huge project in there?
Okay. I think I have solid direction on that and we'll work on it. And we will bring it back to you all in September for additional discussion.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? I would entertain a motion.
Do we have a briefing?
Oh, I'm sorry, do we?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, so I have a few things.
Do we need to like extend the meeting? Since it's almost 9 o'clock?
Yeah, if you could just give us a quick additional five minutes, we will speed through this.
Okay. I'll move to extend our meeting for 10 minutes.
Okay. I always appreciate that.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Pelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Motion passes.
While Erin is still standing up there and he's got control of the computer, I've asked Erin to give you all a quick 90 to 120 second update on our scholarship program.
I got to find it first. There we go. So as you know, we implemented the new cost recovery policy and with that came the new scholarship fund. And so here are some key highlights from the first quarter. 2024, we awarded a total of $6,700 in scholarships. In quarter one of '25, we're up to $14,265. And if you look at the chart in the middle, we are edging out right where 2019 was for the total year. So we're just below that in the first quarter.
I thought we weren't going to charge until summer.
Well, that's just for the two. This is just scholarship programs, so it's for anything.
Okay.
This has also opened up a lot more programs. And so you've seen our average, well, 36% was our award rate in, our average award rate in 2024, meaning with the $150 cap, it actually dropped that 50% down to 36% because they would have a little bit remaining and they would spend that on another program. So it dropped that average and that was obviously our lowest since 2019. But this year so far, we're at an assistance rate, average assistance rate of about 84%. And program counts, '24, we had 17 programs and this year, we're already at 31 that have been registered for. In this, if you look at this chart right here, as we're moving pretty quickly, is 50% scholarship level, 25% of the awards are 50%. 15% at a 60% award, 13% at a 70% award, 10% at an 80 and a 37% at 100% award, meaning 37% of the people that have applied are getting full financial assistance. They don't pay anything. Here's the listing of the programs and the levels that they're supported at. One of the highlights for me is we have people that have registered to use our fitness facility at the Douglas Center on 100% scholarship, meaning we're meeting our mission of providing a healthier community at no cost. And those of a lower socioeconomic status have trouble getting good health outcomes. So for me, this is, this scholarship's doing what it should be doing. As you can see, there are a lot of programs that are being funded at 100%. We've got our memberships in here from all of our facilities. The next slide is where those funds were awarded. Little Apple Day Camp, which is our summer childcare, $7,200. And previously, it's been the water park. And you'll see a jump in this through this quarter, the second quarter, as that continues to increase when we're ready to open it. But daycare in the summer at 100%, $7,200. Obviously, it's one of our more expensive programs at 750 a session with two sessions. But we continue to expand the availability of that and seeing people get that award obviously allows them to have the assistance that they need. And unfortunately, what that does to my chart makes these other ones look really small, but you can see how they kind of ebb and flow. Swim lessons are high. Aquatics is going to be high. So, and I'm happily answering any questions if you have them.
That is awesome. I am happy to pay full price for Little Apple Day Camp. It's a great program and I'm really glad to see that we've got some folks that probably wouldn't have been able to do it last year that are able to access that. So it's really important.
Just to put a hard number to that, 37%, it's 15 people at 100% assistance, so.
Erin, were these the numbers that you were expecting and/or the foundation? And can they maintain at this?
We, I went over this with them before this meeting